Great.
At the Nerd County Board.
They left the gate so that...
Oh, is that one of them?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I left a little bit early.
Oh.
And I called him when he reversed.
Oh.
I just wanted... I was looking for somebody to hand me something. Maybe I could find Margie Coe, because there's nobody at the Coe check out.
They have the machine right there to validate your ticket. But a lot of people saw it, so they just have to go in.
We should still have laid, because it was free.
Because if these six dollars were right here, the parking... Where? Your car?
No, no, but she got it first.
I left lower.
If it wasn't the American, it was another...
Wow.
But they reversed my credit card to room. Right. That was part of the...
Obstretails, obstretails and parking. The money was... I mean, the food was amazing.
I didn't even deserve to do it.
Very rich. Yeah. For those who take two, five, thirteen, or you know that.
I'm going to call to order the city council to meet these accessories. The stamp has a very good this special meeting. Of March the twenty-sixth. We are going to be going inside the closed session. Recession in the closed session. Would you please tell us what's on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor.
Council agency authority member Taylor.
Yep.
Council agency authority member Torres is currently outside. Council agency authority member Van.
Yeah.
Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Person Warren.
There.
And Mayor Chairman Chauvin. Thank you.
Will you receive any correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Is there anybody wants to speak on any?
We have none, sir.
It's one item on closed session for today. It's conference with legal counsel anticipating litigation, exposure pursuant to government closed session by Department of Justice.
I'm going to recede recess. We'll be back. Okay, we're coming back out of closed sessions. Want to open up from the other side, the city council meetings, accessory, city housing authority, and special news updates. Just need to report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilor.
Go for it.
Council agency authority member Taylor.
Yep.
Council agency authority member Torres.
Here.
Council agency authority member Van.
Yeah.
Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Person Warren.
There.
And Mayor Chairman Chauvin.
Here.
If you will all please rise at this time and try to get our place right. And since you days of number twelve, you are.
Go ahead of your heart. Free to begin.
I would like to introduce to you the United States of America. Steering of the public, I will stress, Congress.
Okay, presentations and awards. We are going to hear from towns and public affairs on state federal.
A local county.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Representative.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I'm the city councilor for all the towns and public affairs. Thanks for having me again tonight. I will try to be brief. I know there's a lot on the agenda. There is a lot going on. In Sacramento, we did reconvene on January third, as you know, as I recorded last month. But we've got the final bill count of what was introduced before the deadline. There's about twenty-one hundred additional legislation combined with the leftovers from last year. So definitely a full docket right now in Sacramento. They are very busy with bills. They're currently on spring recess right now. If you see them back in the district, that would be why. Spring recess, it draws on August or on, excuse me, April first, next Monday, they will be back. Then April twenty-sixth is their next major policy committee deadline. That is a big indication of what's going to, what's going to happen this year, what's going to go through this year. Not necessarily about what passes, but mostly what gets set for hearings and then negotiations up into that and during those live meetings. I did want to mention, I don't have a slide on the budget, no, no major updates besides we're still pretty massive crisis here in our budget. The Senate leadership, Senate and Assembly leadership met with the governor and announced a early action budget plan. All of that really means is that they agreed on some items that they need to take immediate action on when it comes to reducing the deficit and mostly tapping into our reserve fundings prior to that June thirty and June fifteen, excuse me, deadline of the budget. So you'll see some budget activity in the next couple of weeks likely, but it'll be voting improved, what I'm calling it. Not really controversial, that everyone can agree upon. And the real meaty stuff will come a lot later. Your probably in the June, a lot of timeframe. Ballot updates. Prop one passed, as we know, narrowly, I would say narrowly, that's pretty close. I don't think anyone expected it to be that close. I know the governor certainly didn't expect it to be that close. He was very cautious leading up to it. He canceled his state of the state address leading up to it in anticipation of potentially not passing. So as a reminder, that is that six point roughly four billion dollar bond to help construct and operate behavioral treatment facilities. But moving on to the November general, we've already talked about these, so I don't have to, I don't have to talk about it anymore. But Taxpayer Protection Government Accountability Act is still qualified. ACA thirteen, ACA one is still going to be on there. So we're still waiting to hear what the legislature and California Business Roundtable will potentially negotiate to take those off ballot. The only change on this is the Prop forty-seven reform. I forget the long title, but the Prop forty-seven reform ballot measure received twenty-five percent of its signatures valid, which is a checkpoint in terms of get, get ready, need full amount of signatures, sub five hundred thousand odd signatures it needs. I think it's probably going to qualify at this point. Twenty-five percent level is usually pretty strong at this point, so I would expect that to qualify. And then, of course, local rent control has qualified as well.
Do you want to go for that?
I'm not an attorney, I'm not a professional of rent control, but I believe the ballot measure gives the general law cities the ability to enact rent control should we want from, from the council. I believe... I, I can go back and check. I don't know that to be true, but I believe charter cities can already, but I don't believe general law cities can. Moving on to our favorite topic, when it comes to a couple of bills we've been working on with the City for ordering the intent to commit prostitution. So we know that this bill is something that the city, the city has supported this bill. It's a very important bill for a lot of cities in California right now to help with the impact of SB three fifty-seven from Senator Weiner a couple of years ago. It does, so just to recap, this does require that police and police officers consider a set of conditions before issuing citations for ordering with the intent to commit prostitution. You know, there is some guardrails around it to make sure it's not being abused. The, the news coming out of this is that the Assembly Public Safety Chair, Kevin McCarty, is not a huge fan of this. Senator Weiner has come out privately, I would say, about opposing all of these bills. He's not comfortable adjusting this area just yet. However, so that's the bad news. So the hearing was, it was supposed to be heard in the Assembly Public Safety Committee next week. That was postponed indefinitely. But the good news is just recently, and I haven't even gotten a chance to update staff on this yet, but just recently Speaker Robert Rivas has gotten personally involved in this because he just found out that the city's students have been having this problem in his district. So he is personally invested now and very interested and has told the Assembly Member on the case that he will be negotiating some sort of middle ground between the Assembly Members Cam and, yeah, George T. Plus Otis that is opposing this legislation. So more to come on that. I don't have a timeframe on that, unfortunately. It could be this month, it could be in three months. But the speaker being personally involved is nothing but a good thing, I think, right now. When it comes to having high powers individuals caring about this. I think our biggest hurdle was always, it was very isolated around the state and then we weren't going to get statewide support. But more to come.
What are you talking about?
What, what about?
I was talking about, I, I heard that right now that they were... It's not hurt, you know, right?
Right.
I heard a rumor that you guys save by dropping it down before. Is that kind of what we are, is that though?
We, we are, we are not very far along with Prop forty-seven reform. So the previous, the ballot measure I was talking about is a citizen initiative. It's, it's the, you know, Public Safety and Something Something Rather Act that would help with Prop forty-seven reform by making fentanyl more of a felony crime possession, reducing that nine hundred and fifty level, so you could have felonies for that that are below the nine fifty value. A couple of other improvements that citizens want to see Prop forty-seven. So that, I think that will fall by that's my guess for November, the ballot for the people. When it comes to the legislature and legislation, the topic is not very far along in terms of what people can agree upon for Prop forty-seven reform, the legislation. But I think there will be a ballot measure on it either way.
The thing that matters is if you drop it down before fifty, if the flash mob, they consent still out. Obviously, you gotta do it, tell them the number of people that go in and burn up several miles, right? So that's how, right?
There's, I mean, I'm sure that at least you can, it's, there's a lot going on right now on this Prop forty-seven reform. There's even a select special committee that has met about it to talk about retail test specifically, what the solutions are. I, I don't think it's gone anywhere yet. There's, it's a very difficult subject for the legislature to agree upon right now.
And it's so many now that the cartel actually hired to do it, that they know they're not going to be punished for it because they just don't do that pussy. So the number of these citizens are increasing almost. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
As it relates to two other bills related to ordering that the city has also supported, Assembly Member Tretaw, our Assembly Member here, Stanton, has introduced AB two six four six, which is a, I'll call it a hybrid bill that does include some of the circumstances that the Rodriguez bill includes in terms of conditions of when you can cite. Most importantly, it sets up buffer zones around sensitive areas where you can enforce ordering with the intent to commit prostitution, such as schools, playgrounds, amusement parks, or state highways. So amusement parks, state highways, done specifically for Stanton from the Assembly Member. So he's really trying to get narrow and district focused about how he can potentially impact this issue. It is not scheduled for a hearing right now. I don't know if it will be scheduled for a hearing. He has until that April twenty-sixth deadline that I talked about earlier to get it heard in Assembly Public Safety. But remember, that's the same committee that AB two three, two zero three four is going to have, have trouble in as well. So very possible that they get it handled together or two three, two zero three four will be the, the one moving forward. Same on the Senate side, SB twelve nineteen, Senator Sciardo has a piece of Orange County in Yorklinda. He introduced a bill that is very similar to AB two zero three four, have a lot of the same language when it comes to circumstances for to issue citations, but has a couple of differences in that it allows vehicle or pound division, if found guilty of disorderly conduct provisions, and that adds disorderly conduct provisions as another metric for, for disordering during the intent. So a little bit different, but very similar. That is set to be heard next week. Maybe I'm excited to hear what the Senate, Senate Public Safety Committee has to say about that, if it does get heard. But I'm not super confident it's going to pass on Tuesday just because of the high level conversations it says involved into it this week. Moving on to some, a couple of other pieces of legislation I just want to let the city know about that are introduced and being discussed, not necessarily moving forward yet, but AB two five six one is a pretty intense piece of legislation that would require public agencies like cities that have a ten percent vacancy rate in their bargaining units to produce a plan for how they are going to address and hire to reduce that ten percent vacancy rate. It's pretty intense. It, it does require a lot out of local agencies. That plan has to be specific, measurable, and achievable. It could require a lot of resources to be able to fill that. And as we all know, there could be some strategic reasons to have vacancies in certain bargaining units at certain times. But this is definitely a labor pushed legislation that is on the radar of every public agency right now. And then SB eleven sixteen by Senator Portino, the reintroduction of this bill last year, they got vetoed by the governor last minute. This is a bill that you probably saw on the news a lot. It restores the eligibility for striking workers to receive unemployment benefits after two weeks of striking. So currently, you're striking, no unemployment benefits, but this bill would say, okay, but after two weeks, you can have it, which obviously has a cost to the local agencies that are being striking. So with that, I'll move on to some federal news. Our federal remark, our community project funding from Congressman Correa for the million dollars for the Public Safety Center re-application is finally signed into law, done, finalized. So very good news there. We're very grateful to the Congressman and everyone involved for that. Not one week later, the next, the next cycle starts for fiscal year twenty-five. So in that meantime, worked with staff to submit three projects to Senator Butler and Senator Padilla for additional funding for next year's fiscal year twenty-five. More with pedestrian bridge, the senior center enhancement and neighborhood elimination projects are the three that we have submitted. Congressman Correa's office deadline is this Friday, except I just got a text from his legislative director today that he's going to extend it another week. So we'll have another week to submit it, but we have everything we need to submit it. It'll be the same projects this year, so. With that, moving very quickly to grants, just wanted to update the city on a couple of the grants that we've been working on. We're still pending on the OCTA complete streets, but we were successful in getting a automated ferment processing application formulae for about forty thousand dollars. That was good news. And then we were unsuccessful for a California Volunteers grant, which is an interesting one for security events and block parties that we were trying to create. And then we're currently working with staff to set up time to talk about the active transportation program, see if there's any pedestrian bike safe routes to school projects we can apply for in June. And with that, I am happy to take any questions.
How many bills has the Public Safety Committee passed last eight years?
Public Safety, the Assembly Public Safety Committee? In the last how many years? One year?
Oh, one.
Oh.
Is there a reason for that?
I'm not sure what you're referring to. The Assembly Public Safety Committee has passed several more than one. Public...
I mean, I'm sorry about this. I can't take it except for the fifth one, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, the process is the process. Any other questions?
Anybody having me? As always, thank you for your student report.
My pleasure, thank you.
I would have to run out to item number nine. Let's see if we can say, um, here. Have we received any question?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Is there any written? Four. Yeah, I like this one, nine I, nine G. The group. Two, what's that? Our bill. Inside the...
A second by one, correct?
Got it.
In, no, no, favor?
This is done.
Any questions for item nine I? The water construction contractor in your part renovation project?
Yes. Yeah, I just had a question. Have we had a chance for the, to have a quick one? And what was really there on that?
Yes, Mayor, this was, so this is a grant funded project, which has been taking place for a number of years. And at that time, through the grant process, there was some input from the community on what they wanted to see in that park.
I was...
Probably, I would say, around that time, I know, because on the staff, we mentioned that that was a, that some of the community contributed to the design of this park.
Would it be our best interest to maybe revisit that with the tenants or that guy and delay the project?
That will delay the project and we're pretty much finalized the design at this point.
I just sort of think that part of the change in that is a different call.
Yeah, Eddie, we'll, we'll have a community, uh, this flyer for, you know, letting know that the project's oncoming. You know, so we'll let the community know about the project. And if there's questions, they can always reach out to us. That's probably the public notice we do with construction projects.
Yeah, because a lot of things we changed with the COVID, we had to put this down, the whole part. Different time.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Our last meeting that we had, we sent, you know, was there and she did a presentation for neighbors. There's, so I think there are half, maybe nothing. I'd like to make, take most of your food, you ready to do that for nine? On the list?
We got it, Donald, got it. We have a motion by Mayor Chauvin and thank you by Councilman Torres. Mr. Mayor, all in favor?
I have.
Any votes? During the sentence, item passes. Mr. Mayor, item nine G, First Amendment to Grant Administration Agreement with the Hope Center of Orange County. Any questions for staff?
The Hope Center said that they were ready to help us out with some of the concerns they have on our whole, our movement. We've been talking about that for several months. Is there any update to what the Hope Center has done, considering we are part of the five million?
Mayor's staff has been working closely with the Hope Center. We had initially started a pilot program with them. We could move on the pilot program because we were not satisfied with the results we were seeing. We re-engaged with administrative staff to create the new plan for, for Stanton. We are in the second pilot phase now, I think we're about with week six. We continue to give regular feedback to Hope Center staff to continue to reply expectations, or service levels, when we call them. So I would say it's a work in progress. It certainly hasn't met our expectations as they stand, but we're hopeful. But our staff is continuing to address the concerns at our, ourselves at a local level and not just waiting to rely on them.
You should be right to put the forty minutes on. They know that we want to expect something. But they haven't really done a lot. Keep touching. Keep touching. You know, the other thing I was concerned about is a proposed First Amendment and a grant administration agreement directs to burn grant funds, categorizes indirect costs to direct.
Sure, so when the city of Stanton agreed to be the fiscal agent for the burn grant, we were committing to providing administrative staff support for review of the invoices that were coming out of the Hope Center and then authorization of drawdown of the grant fund and periodic reporting to the federal granting agency. So there was a bucket of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was set aside for reimbursement on an as used basis. As we have gone through about a third of our service for the fiscal agency, we've only used about five thousand dollars. So it became clear there would be a lot left over after our, our tenure ended. We did go back and amend the second grant agreement to convert the fiscal agency services over to the Hope Center, so we have two more years to serve. In the meantime, the city of Fullerton, the way the Hope Center works is each city gets an allocation from the burn grant, plus they can choose to collectively add in additional funds to support personnel who are serving at the Hope Center. Early on, the city of Fullerton provided the first police officer to the Hope Center to provide the enforcement aspect of their services. They were paying for that wholly out of pocket on behalf of the other routinely participating cities. So as they were reviewing the budget and it became apparent that there was going to be a surplus in the administrative indirect costs, they made a request if a portion of those funds could be reallocated to direct costs to go to not fully cover, but subsidize a portion of what the city of Fullerton was paying out of their general fund. So after an analysis of the funds, the city of Stanton is fine with that, the Oak Board agrees with that. These are not the city of Stanton fund. Anything that we do not bill against and use must be returned to the Hope Center at the end of our fiscal agency, sir.
Indirect?
Correct. Indirect, currently, the remaining amounts will be categorized as indirect funds for administrative purposes.
Any questions? I've got to go ahead and do nine G. I'll second that. All in favor?
I'm...
Okay, we're now at public hearings, we're at item ten A. We do have some speakers that would like to speak on item ten A. Mister Hurst, if it's okay with you, I think maybe if you'd like to see the presentation, that, you know, that happened in your...
Good evening, Council, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to talk about the town center's specific plan. I will give you just a little bit of the background before I move over to our consultant, John Morland. He's been a part of this project since its initiation back in December of twenty twenty. Overall, the goal and purpose of the town center specific plan are two goals. One, we're definitely reaching, free by the land, as an underutilized area of the city, create a more walkable downtown with the best use development in the area, along with preserving some of the single family that we have in that, in those spaces as well. The other important goal is to establish consistency between the general plan and the zoning for that area. We currently have a new consistency, which leaves us in a bit of vulnerabilities of this plan. We will help revitalize and underutilize area and also provide it to know much more secure place pregnant to development projects happening in this, on the area. When John goes through, he's going to go through very thoroughly, so please bear with us, the inception of it from the workshops to developing to presenting to the planning commission. One of the important things for staff throughout this entire project has been the input we chose through the department. It is a very purposely aspirational document. There are some very grand visions for that specific planning area. All of it, though, again, is tied back to preserving areas that the community and early workshops identified that we wanted. When this plan was presented to the planning commission, it went twice to the planning commission. The first public hearing provided a lot of feedback from community members that maybe hadn't participated in the process. They've shared a lot of concerns, different items that they wanted to reflect in the specific plan. The planning commission definitely, again, being concerned with listening to the community, directed staff to go back. We met with different business owners, property owners, took in feedback. I believe those state leaders, we can verify, hope to ensure that the, the plan that we have before each night, the plan that the planning commission ultimately approved, has amendments in there now that do allow flexibility to allow our existing businesses to continue to grow, our existing residents to continue to thrive in that area, while still allowing... while still allowing paths for future growth and revitalization. Um, so again, we'll go through all of this. I'll hand it back to me. We'll talk and then we can have your public hearing. So I'm gonna hand it off right now to John Moreland.
Good evening. Thanks, John Moreland. I'm the director of beauty planning with Raincom Consultants. Um, I'll be providing a brief overview of the town center specific plan and this related document. The town center specific plan is generally bounded by, um, uh, the area highlighted on screen. Um, generally bound by Dale Avenue, um, east, uh, Tella Avenue on the south, Rose Street on the west, and Sridos Avenue on the north. Uh, the purpose of the specific plan came from the city's, uh, general, uh, general plan, um, for this area. And also when the city released a, uh, art piece that the specific plan covered on that. Um, as Crystal mentioned, the specific plan is intended to be a long-term visionary document similar to the city's general plan. The timeline for the specific plan is looking at developments in a twenty-year timeframe. Um, the other purposes that were identified, um, that, uh, that essentially was our guiding principles from taking off the project. It was, um, implementing the, uh, the already, uh, town, the already, uh, adopted town center mixed-use general, uh, district, general plan designation that is currently on the general plan. Um, also to serve the needs of a changing community. Um, providing regulatory and design, um, guidance, which we'll go a little bit more later. Um, improving existing residential, um, commercial areas on Boulevard and industrial areas. Um, enhancing Beach Boulevard, um, focusing, developing a town center around the city's Main Street, helping enhance the. And also, uh, allowing for commercial, industrial, and mixed-use developments while allowing existing compatible, uh, businesses to operate. Um, as Crystal mentioned, uh, we kicked off the effort in 2020. Sure.
The last thought, allow for new commercial, industrial, mixed-use developments while allowing funding existing compatible services to operate. Yes. The term compatible.
Yes, in terms of, in terms of, uh, compatible, when you're introducing, um, uh, when you have a inserting kind of new residential, kind of new mixed-use and converting to a, uh, kind of a mixed-use and walkable community. Uh, generally, uh, generally there are, uh, compatible, uh, compatible businesses. Um, retail shops, grocery stores, those are kind of certain neighborhood, uh, neighborhood centers. Um, however, um, uh, heavy, uh, heavy industrial, um, uh, manufacturing, uh, those that may, um, uh, outdoor, kind of contractor storage yards, those that may not be really kind of synonymous with a, um, a kind of a downtown setting, those are generally not considered to be, uh, compatible businesses. I know I'll go into a little bit about like how that's going to, um, uh, continue in a couple, uh, couple slides and kind of detail of how this would eventually.
My question is something his grandfather did. Grandfather did. Are they allowed to stay up to, uh, with that operation?
We'll have a slide on in the future, but just I'd like to drop it. I think they'll be, um, they'll be allowed to continue and even expand for a period of approximately eight years, and then they will be considered, um, non-performing.
When the business comes in, it's on this or something there and, uh, begins to operate that business, I mean, the guidelines, and in eight years later, you're going to bring them out?
So an existing business that is currently, that is currently, um, a lot of the, um, time of this goes into effect, um, would be able to remain in the span. A new business, when this designation would go into effect, would not be able to locate there unless it's just said with that. But the, uh, specific plan does allow for commercial, uh, commercial retail, uh, light industrial uses, compatible research and development uses. If that, it would just be essentially like outdoor storage yards and kind of heavy manufacturing. A new business would not be able to locate there.
So do you have an existing condition, each permitted on property, that that's thirty-nine years? And, um, it's, it's in that particular zone, would they be allowed to stay there with their grandfather name? This regulates that grandfather clause of this.
If I can, uh, jump in there. So the conditional use requirement remains on the property and it will continue to regulate that property as long as that existing use stays there. So it doesn't even have to be a big business as long as it trades hands and it's occupied within a year. That's the threshold that we have for non-performing. What the specific plan does is, and that's our typical zoning code. What the specific plan does is it actually gives an eight-year grace period to all properties and all non-comformities throughout this plan. It, it does that in a way where for eight years, all properties that are currently existing can continue to essentially operate under our existing zoning code and they don't have a non-comforming designation. Because a non-comforming designation says you can continue to operate, but you can't grow or expand. That personal or existing differences was a very limiting factor um, in that they have, you know, five-year plans where they want to operate the business or they can add in. So we built in that eight-year grace period so they can continue to expand on their existing site. We did put in some provisions, again, to create buffer, so we have to have additional plans. We need, um, some additional trees to sort of shield it from any new residential development that might find that incompatible. Uh, but we did intend to allow for the existing users to stay there. Anything with the same key would be allowed to continue being and continue. They wouldn't even be able to allow the next eight-year period to come in and amend this new to expand a little more beyond what you've written about. After the eight years, it's considered non-performing and.
So the condition is pretty much where we started. And then they need to have that admitted, they have their vote in to do that. But, uh, they also have, uh, eight years of grace period, but they would pay that if they have.
It depends on the use, but in general, that assumption, yes, because some uses are allowed by right, um, today. So those would not need a conditional use. If they were allowed by right, they still have the same eight years. They need to do what they need to do in eight years. After that tender is done, then they can just continue to operate as they are, they would be able to. But they can continue to operate as long as they want to stay on the property.
This is still the property being of the property and put with this part of that?
No, it's the use. So if the, if the property is sold as long as the use remains, uh, then it can continue on there. Uh, and if it remains vacant or it changes to a different use for a year, then the non-comformity goes away and has to comply with the new renovation.
So the condition is made specific, that's okay, but the conditional use allows other types of things under a condition. I'm sorry for your.
When we picked off this, uh, this outreach effort in 2020, uh, hosted a initial visioning, uh, outreach session virtually, um, in December 2020. Um, also hosted a plan alternatives, uh, bidding session virtually in March of 2021. Uh, held a joint virtual, um, city council and planning mission workshop workshop in June 2021. Um, had a online survey and a project detail, uh, detailed video that, uh, provided additional information about, um, the draft specific plan, uh, and that was posted in the end of 2021 for early 2022. I also prepared a initial study mitigated negative, uh, subsequent initial study mitigating negative declaration and rubbed that, um, for public comment, um, to ABCs and public from November fifteenth through December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And we also, in addition to this, uh, also held, uh, two planning commission, um, hearings that, uh, Crystal mentioned previously. That will go into a little bit more detail. Um, what we heard as part of these outreach, um, meetings was really to create a, um, a main street and really have a focus on proving, um, the proving the walkability of, uh, Main Street as well as, uh, as. Uh, walkability was something that, uh, occurred a lot in our, um, outreach. Um, and also, um, allowing for, um, improved streetscape through landscape in the public realm. Um, and also providing for more locally serving retail and, uh, commercial developments. Um, in terms of outdoor spaces, bringing the, uh, the interior out to, uh, outdoors um, in both, uh, horizontal mixed-use, that's where you have the residential and your commercial uses separated, but on the same property. As well as vertical mixed uses where we have the retail on the bottom and the, uh, residential above with the same building. Um, another thing that we heard was for, um, uh, having new connections. There are two rail lines, um, that kind of go through that could, uh, provide is a network for sales. Introducing, um, new parks, um, into this area. This area currently doesn't have any new parks. Um, and that was something that was, uh, important. Um, there's also the opportunity, the, um, the former, uh, Pacific Electric Railway, um, uh, bisects the property, bisects the specific plan area diagonally. Um, there could be, uh, potentially a future station that could be located there and, uh, allowing for the flexibility to allow for a mixed-use transit plaza. The other thing that we also heard was to, uh, preserve existing, um, single-family neighborhoods within the planning area. Uh, maintain, um, existing businesses as well as, uh, creating, uh, design standards, uh, for the planning area. On this, this slide, uh, indicates the, uh, land use plans identified in this specific. I mentioned previously, this is a high-level, um, specific plan with a twenty, with a twenty-year timeframe. The priority of this emphasis is on the Main Street experience. So really the, um, those properties that are identified as red, that's the retail, um, oriented mixed-use, uh, where the ground floor would be, uh, required to provide some, some form of retail, um, in addition to, um, to residential uses. Uh, and the red area kind of extends from, uh, Pacific on the south of, uh, up along Beach Boulevard in Chestnut and across, uh. And then we also wanted to create a, um, new mixed-use center in a Main Street, uh, uh, terminus along Main Street. So when you, um, are walking along Main, Main Street, having kind of a, a walkable area with the, uh, with shops on there and kind of a, a commercial, a commercial setting. Uh, and, and then have a, a visual terminus that, uh, that would be a city releasing, um, as kind of walk, walk down, um, Main Street. Uh, also allowing for a, uh, public plaza, um, along, uh, Beach Boulevard, uh, near the intersection of Main Street. Um, and as I mentioned previously, uh, having linear open spaces along the existing, uh, rail corridors. Uh, there is the, um, spotlight. Um, but there is a unique Pacific spur, um, that kind of bisects the, uh, property and it's just west. Could be opportunities potentially for, um, uh, sales along there as well as, uh, potentially along the, um, former, it's now owned by OCTA, but the former, um, Pacific Electric Railway. And one thing that I did want to mention about that rail line is, um, that line used to, used to connect, um, from downtown Los Angeles to Santa Ana, was known as West, um, uh, West Santa Ana Bridge. Um, and, uh, essentially is, uh, currently, um, uh, LA Metro is currently extending, uh, the light rail, uh, from downtown, um, LA to Artesia. And the same line on the other end, um, Santa Ana and Garden Road, OCTA is in streetcar along there. So it could be a red for OCTA, could eventually, um, expand, expand that to connect to LA Metro and, um, in Artesia. However, the current plans, uh, for that at this time. Uh, one thing, um, one item that we thought was important to include as part of the specific plan is, um, it essentially introduces the concept of height districts, um, concentrating the height of any potential mixed-use along, um, along the Beach Boulevard corridor. Um, so the height and the area in purple is limited to five stories and, um, this is important as part of, um, our outreach that, that, that height limit has a buffer from any existing state of that. Specific plan includes a fifty-foot, uh, separation from this type of presidential. Uh, the remainder of the planning area will be limited to two or three stories, uh, and there, uh, the previous opens, new open space areas that I mentioned. Um, there are incentives, uh, in the, uh, specific plan to encourage the public, um, the public provision of open space by, uh, granting a two-story height increase for properties that provide. In terms of, um, the environmental document, uh, to a subsequent initial study and mitigated negative declaration, um, was prepared for the town center specific plan. I include a secret checklist, uh, of twenty topics. Um, there were no impacts, less than significant impacts or less than significant impacts to none of these, including aesthetics, uh, you know, resources and wildfire. I do want to point out that there were, um, mitigation proposed, uh, uh, for, um, biological resources, cultural resources, ge- geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, population housing, tribal cultural resources, utilities and service systems. Um, so all the mitigation measures, which were pretty, um, standard for a, um, for a subsequent, uh, mitigating declaration, um, those all brought any potential impacts to a less. Uh, two hearings were held before the city's, uh, planning commission on January seventeenth and on February twenty-first. Um, uh, at this hearing, there were concerns about non-performing, um, commercial and industrial uses. Um, there were also comments about, uh, the logical, um, blowing changes within the specific plan. Um, also compatibility issues between larger and, um, smaller, uh, businesses along Main Street as well as, um, uh, just the need for investment, prefer investment and lease enforcement in this, uh, area too. Um, we talked a little bit about the commercial, I'll kind of go back, try a little more detail about that, but, um, one thing that I did, we thought we did want to note is that there are se- uh, several existing non-performing residential uses within the specific plan. Uh, these parcels that are highlighted in blue are actually in industrial zones currently. Um, right now, they're residential uses. And what the specific plan will be doing is allowing for more flexibility, uh, for these existing residential uses by either expanding, you know, residential designation, so the area, um, along, uh, or Sycamore along here in that purple area. That's essentially now the residential, uh, residential zone specific plan. And also the specific plan allows more flexibility with residential additions. Um, we did go over a little bit, uh, we already went over a little bit about the non-performing commercial uses. Uh, as Crystal mentioned, they'll have a grace period, um, in until June thirty of twenty, uh, thirty-two. Did want to point out that, um, office and retail uses, they are permitted within the blue, uh, with the blue and the red, red area as well. So offices and retail are, are, won't be non-performing. They'll be allowed and taken within the twenty-three. Um, and we already talked about the landscape. Um, so just in, uh, wrapping, uh, wrapping up, um, uh, this exhibit here is, um, depicts the existing general plan. Um, in the, uh, the crosshatch area, that's identified as the, uh, town center mixed-use district in the general plan. That currently, um, already allows up to sixty units per acre. Uh, pursuant to Centerville three thirty, um, there, uh, those are allowed even though the underlying zone, um, is, uh, industrial or, or residential in some cases. So any developer could, uh, propose under Centerville three thirty, a multifamily, uh, multifamily develop up to sixty per acre. Um, also, uh, multifamily are, uh, uses are also allowed in the existing single-family areas, um, within the district in the kind of the lighter orange and the darker orange color. And, um, in order, uh, state laws, specifically Centerville three thirty, um, if you're going to move that designation, essentially requires that any decreased, uh, density in one area has to be offset by an increased density in that area. So what we did with the specific plan, um, is we, we looked at that to really kind of protect the, um, single family by incorporating the buffers. Um, we, um, where the specific plan is compliant, you know, kind of it really allocates density, uh, but it's compliant with Centerville three thirty. Um, it also reduces the residential legal non-performing, uh, uses, uh, for res- residential uses I just mentioned earlier. And also the other thing is it creates, uh, objective development standards. So right now, if a developer want to go in, there's no design guidance or anything in the, in the zoning code that provides any objective standards, uh, since it's predominantly industrial zone. Uh, it's, it's pretty minimal. So the objective development standard with the specific plan is do things like setback, height, and design, and, uh, design criteria to help provide that guidance to the development. And it also incorporates the height buffers I mentioned earlier. And with that, I will turn it back.
Let me just do a quick recap again. So John provided us with a very thorough overview of the specific plan. So the actions that are involved, well, tonight, it would just be to hold a public hearing and then it would be to talk. But the actions that are involved in it would be to certify the environmental document, which was a subsequent mitigated negative declaration. And against John, the mitigation measures that were in place are a lot of these standard limitations. Having a large on-site. There is a general plan amendment, just so that we can update when to reflect Town Center mixed-use district. We did expand the area because we wanted to include the industrial, industrial areas into that general plan land use map. But again, it's still going to be FBR and then approve the zone change, which again, just doesn't mean everything as Town Center is specific plan. So that this is a specific document, sort of zone in that area and also adoption. And John and I are on the same page.
Can you go back to the slide where we talked about it?
Yes, so. What's that?
Along Rose Street.
Along, along Rose Street. So there are two different designations on Long Rose. The yellow is a two-story height limit regardless of the single family or, or a regardless of the single family or attached townhomes. And the orange color is a three-story. Commercial, those areas were designated residential, but the commercial uses like Long Beach Boulevard would be allowed up to five. The commercial uses along Beach Boulevard would be allowed up to five, sort of the purple. Along, along Rose? If I recall correctly, the designation, the designation would still be the same regardless of uses that were there. So it'd be two stories in the yellow area and three stories in the orange.
So they have, is there a mandate to have commercial with five and residence on top there or it can all be?
It could, it could all be one or the other. And south of, and south of Main Street, north of Main Street along Rose is only residential. South of Main Street, we have.
It does provide not to be with a property in that some, to now if they have a residential property, they can do commercial. But also, if they have commercial property, they can build residential, which is much more.
That's great.
On the five stories limit, I'm assuming that's all being planned for apartments? Is that what was discussed or, I mean, I can't see commercial coming in for five stories.
But it's more than likely going to be kind of either a mixed use. Mixed use areas in red would have some sort of commercial component on the ground floor, or it would be residential, similar to what's happening. The intent was for the design along Beach Boulevard was kind of, was already having itself that this is funding for. To kind of allow for that same type of capacity.
Do we have a limit as to how, how many apartment structures could go up there? I mean, it'd be sad if this ended up with just a wall apartment.
Yeah, so there is a density limitation on here until the density is up to seven units per acre. And also, we, we felt that especially along the kind of heat areas, the areas that are kind of identified in red, there is a commercial requirement. That can be met by obviously a standalone commercial building, but any mixed use area along there would be required to provide.
But as far as apartment projects, there's no limit to how many apartment projects.
Right, it would just be the, the density limitation.
Is that, so if that's earmarked, it's mixed use, they have to go both commercial and residential, right?
Correct.
And we can regulate that.
So state law does have limitations if, with any project that is at least, that is six, that has sixty-six percent residential. So there are limitations with Centerville three thirty. Implementing, it has, Centerville three thirty requires a totally objective standards to be applied for those types of developments. If it's commercial developments or industrial, then it goes through the standard process to be able to meet the findings.
But what's nice about that is that we could have the commercial on the base, which is Main Street and then give a living. Has been very successful in many departments.
How are we accommodating park areas?
So with the, there are two, there are two different requirements, there are two different items of park areas. So one is on this land use plan. There is a, if, essentially, the development standards require certain tiers. If a developer comes in and wants a certain density, if they want to, if they want to develop over a unit per acre and provide residential. Those units that have these, the two park areas with the orange asterisks at Beach and Main and then kind of at the end of Main, they will be required to, to provide a park that would be, that would be required to be open to the public. There's also a pocket park that has the same requirement, that's asterisk along the south end of Port Street, just north of Pinto as well. And then on top of, on top of that, there are common open space apartments that are similar to city standards, city standards for swimming pools and things, things of that nature. Similar to other, other complexes.
So we're, we're at the mercy of developers bringing thousands more residents to stand. And thus, we're going to give a couple pocket park?
Well, the park, the park that's, the pocket park, that's at the south, that's the south end, that's a ten thousand square feet minimum, minimum area. And then also, the, the park, the plaza at the corner is a minimum seventy-five hundred square feet. And then you also have a half acre park requirement that's closer to Dale at the end of the terrace. On top of that, there are incentives in the specific plan for developers that provide, for developers. It's, it's called incentive-based zoning, whereas if the developer wants to develop more than thirty units per acre, they have to hit a certain, a certain number of points to, to essentially implement their project at the higher, at the higher, that's forty-five units per acre, sixty units per acre. One of those criteria is to provide public, public open spaces as well. So we're kind of mixing some requirements as well as incentives to try to increase the number of parcels.
That's great, if I, if I can add to that also. Our general plan currently designates most of the area along Beach and entire red area as mixed use. And we don't have any regulations that are in place right now. So what the specific plan was trying to do is create that tier system. So if somebody does want to go to the five stories of maximum density, they're essentially forced to give us something like the open space area. Currently, we don't have that in place with any zoning regulations. They're still currently zoned, commercial and industrials. And like John had mentioned earlier, with SE three thirty facility coming in next week. Because our general plan said that if you do mixed use, they can come in with whatever project they want and you can't, can't stop anyone.
So we need to give you more tools to muscle. I started sort of great, but if you look at the end of the Main Street for that break. We had a chance to buy that three acre plus one quarter in Maine. You know, that is a great presentation. You did a great job and thank you for the information. Okay, is that happy time? I would comment. Okay, we have much bigger, I have TNA, Mr. Harrison.
Mr. Harrison, if you could just speak into the microphone, may I? And then we have the president.
Scott Harrison, the property of one oh six Oracle Rose and seven eight six two Main, which is in the little blue area now. That's such a good job, this whole plan is pretty, I would say, lofty, but it's interesting. I just wish we had a vehicle to get some revenue together to make this happen. I think there's so many different landowners in there that twenty years maybe, a little soon. I think maybe fifty is realistic of being able to do something like this. I also think that all the alleys that are running through these, these areas are a bunch of dead zones and they're places where people, doers do evil things. So, you know, really, in my estimation, it would be great to, underneath the alley, to have more space to build. My particular reason for being here and I've been all along tooting my little horn is I'm at the end of my career and I'm trying to sell my property. And my property where it's located is actually worth less is, in, as a residential means, as over a commercial. Currently, it's own commercial. If you look at the height use plan, they still have it left my, my half lot out on a is in a different zone than the, they did me a favor on this one. It was on, on this map originally, it was separated out as a different zone, which didn't make any sense because it's fifty by sixty lot, which is, doesn't be any standard lot size in the city. But in, in their, in their other map, they have not corrected and included the height requirements we grilling with the rest of my property. So I'm just saying, right now, this plan as it goes, I've lost two possible buyers as they called to the city and asked, what can I do with this? And they're pretty much backing away. It, it, I guess it could be done if I could get the property next door to me and then I could develop it as what you're trying to do with it. But I have to be able to have a million dollars to go get the guy next door and if he wants to move, which is something to do. It'd be the only way that I could cash out of my property and help myself. So that's my take on what's going on here. You know, you guys got a big city vacant, you know. Everyone's affected differently. Thank you, boys.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes, sir.
I would recommend, since you related that small, smaller lot you have there, I'd be enjoying, maybe you can get together with Crystal.
Well, they, they did do it in this, this, on this one, they did include it. But I just noticed on the, the height map, it was still the old map where it was, it was not included. So I was, you know, it just adds more fodder to the conversation. My, the property next to me and that little half lot were residential. And then they converted it over to this blue zone, which is, it was yellow before and they converted it over to blue. But in the height requirement map, if you'll notice, it's really hard to see, especially from over here at that, that level. But I'm pretty sure my eyesight's good. And the lot next door to me and the little half lot that I have are, are a different height require, zoning than the other part of my property, which is, it's the two-story amount as opposed to the three-story, which actually, three stories would grant me more revenue. So that would be a better position.
Mr. Harrison? We have new employers that probably.
Oh, yeah, well. Well, I moved here in ninety-eight and I've had the great pleasure of working for the city at the police station. Just helping out anyone I can. I love what I do. I once had some health issues and so that was my reason for, not that I didn't love my craft, because I still love my craft. Like, I do plumbing, heating, air conditioning and I've been operating out of there for, since I got it. It's been great, it's been a great pleasure, great to do business with the city. I actually was president of the Chamber of Commerce when it existed for quite a number of years. Just try to be a, a, a good member of society.
Thank you. Thank you for being here with us. I have a question, Crystal. If we were to approve this, I this is a first reading, right? So if we, we still can, and we, we, we have a topic, can we do that, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, what should we do?
Mr. Harrison, this time in a motion by Councilmember Warren, or Mayor Lieutenant Warren, is signed by Councilmember Van. Now, we're going to call both, Councilmember Van as Councilmember Forrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Tiara.
Yes.
Air Lieutenant Warren.
Yeah.
Air Shocker.
Yes.
Do you think Mr. Shocker, if you don't mind, closing the public hearing, please? Public hearing is closed.
Okay, we're now moving on to item number eleven, which is unfinished business. This is a one and A, consideration of the extension of the expired commercial cannabis cultivation permits and issuance of delivery permit for existing operational commercial cannabis retail outlets.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. At its meeting of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the council considered a request to extend expired commercial cannabis cultivation permit. Following council discussion, the council directed staff to return to a future meeting after researching operational commercial, commercial cannabis cultivation businesses in the surrounding region. With a focus on timelines to become operational. In addition to reconsidering the extension of expired commercial cannabis cultivation permits, staff is requesting the council consider the issuance of delivery permits for existing operational commercial cannabis retail outlets. Next slide, please. After approving the permitting and regulating the cannabis business, the city's inaugural request for cannabis business applications in early twenty twenty. The city received fifty-six applications across five categories and ultimately issued a thirteen permit. Next slide, please. As of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, four of the thirteen permits issued were operational and nine had expired. At its meeting of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the council was informed that none of the three cultivation committees were operational by the November twenty twenty-three deadline. The three cultivation committees requested an extension. Based upon the city's municipal code, the city manager administratively denied the extension requests. After considering the extension requests and reviewing the timeline of activity, the council directed staff to conduct additional research to be brought back to the council at a future date. Next slide, please. Staff initiated their research by visiting the Department of Cannabis Control California and identified a regional list of nine commercial cannabis cultivation businesses. Staff reached out to the respective planning departments via multiple email and phone calls, but did not receive consistent data that could be used to identify patterns or trends regarding delays related to commercial cannabis cultivation mission. The, the city of Long Beach did confirm that electrical requirements were a common hurdle for most of their cultivation permits. Next slide, please. Oh, we're gonna wait. Oh, there we go. One of the reasons the council allowed commercial cannabis in the city was to ensure the city's long-term fiscal stability through diversified revenue source. On November fifth, two thousand nineteen, Stanton voters passed measure establishing the commercial cannabis tax rate on the street. At its meeting of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the council discussed the cultivation tax that would have been collected had all permit holders become operational by the November twenty twenty-three deadline. Council directed staff to consider those revenues in preparing. Council directed staff to consider those revenues in preparing any type of recommendation regarding extension of the permit. Accordingly, staff has developed three potential models for council consideration. Of course, there aren't infinite number of variations the council could ultimately settle on if they choose to extend these expired permits. The three options are as follows, as shown on your screen. And again, these are just for discussion purposes. The council could, of course, choose any percentage between zero and one hundred percent at any period of time. So option one is just the straight amount of cannabi tax based on the square footage of each proposed cultivation business across thirty-six months. And in talking to our cultivation permittees, they felt that on the outside thirty-six months would give them enough time to finish their project. Everybody would be hopeful that it would finish prior to that. Option two splits the thirty-six month timeframe into two eighteen-month timeframes. So you would start at a fifty percent cultivation tax rate for the first eighteen months. And then if you need more than that and you're still not operational, it would jump to the full one hundred percent. Option three breaks the thirty-six month time period into three twelve-month chunks, with the first year being taxed at a thirty-three percent rate, the second year at a sixty-six percent rate, and the final year at the full rate. So at this point, this brings me to the end of this section on the cultivation permits. I can either pause for questions now or continue my presentation on the delivery permit issuance and take all questions at the end of the presentation. Keep going. Okay, next slide, please. On-demand delivery of cannabis is when a retailer takes an order from a customer and then sends a courier to deliver that order, similar to the way DoorDash or Uber Eats works. Cannabis industry reports estimate that by two thousand twenty-five, the cannabis delivery industry will grow to about thirty billion dollars. Although the city issued four delivery permits, none of the permittees were able to become operational by the November twenty twenty-three deadline. At this time, the city has an opportunity to benefit from the additional sales tax and cannabis tax, which is six percent for retail sales, that delivery could bring in, while strengthening the fiscal viability of the existing operational local commercial cannabis retail outlets. We know there is a thriving cannabis delivery market inside and outside of the city, and Stanton offices are currently missing out on those sales. Costa Mesa currently has no cap on the number of cannabis retailers allowed to operate in the city and has approved twenty-two permits. Costa Mesa is considering implementing a cap of thirty permits. Santa Ana has a cap of thirty retail permits, while Long Beach has forty. The point being that our four retail outlets are surrounded by over a one hundred competitors. Projections of delivery sales per retail location, based upon discussions with industry professionals, are as follows. So again, this was based upon talking to some of our existing retailers who do have delivery operations at their other outlet. So the expected orders are approximately two hundred and fifty per day, or seventy-five hundred per month. The average order ranges between fifty-five to sixty dollars per order. That equates to average monthly sales between four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. And then if you add just the cannabis tax, not our regular sales tax on top of that, that's additional revenue to the city of approximately twenty-four to thirty thousand dollars per month.
Question. Yeah, I know that tax measure is open. Prove that a three percent tax rate for distribution. Is that what delivery is? It'd be three percent tax rate for us? Remember, there's separate category. So it's cultivation, which is like alcohol, but squared by distribution, three percent manufacturing. I feel like it does. Distribution. Meanwhile, I feel like we, we have this sale. So we have to consider retail. Yeah, so I will look into that, but I. Okay, so if they're delivering it from other cities, we still get to keep that six percent and that one cent tax for Gigi, is that an addition or is that separated by cities?
So would be like anything else that somebody orders where it's coming, it's originally out of Stanton, but if it's to be delivered to an out-of-town address, there's a difference in the tax.
But the six percent is still ours.
That's the sales tax.
As lawyers, yes, because it's, it would be purchased from our retail outlet. And they would be using your deliveries.
I will, let me, uh, I will have to clarify and get back to you on which. Oh, yes, sorry. In addition, allowing delivery at each of our retail locations will also create new local jobs. Council may now consider authorizing an extension of up to thirty-six months with a selected tiered cultivation tax payment schedule for expired commercial cannabis cultivation permits and direct staff to prepare the necessary supporting municipal code amendments. And they may also consider authorizing staff to reopen the application periods specifically for delivery permits to the currently operating retail permit holders in good standing and prepare the necessary supporting municipal code amendments. That concludes my staff report and I'm available for any questions. And I also see at least two representatives from our commercial cannabis community in the audience that may also be available to answer any questions.
Okay, I'd like to probably say the, uh, delivery. You know, historically, after we opened up, all of the existing permittees tried and included delivery. So they've already got a delivery system built in to their, which is good. Alls we really need to do is to make sure they get permitted, we are, our ordinance change and move on and start. But I think that's kind of the note we.
We have four among the same street. The traffic in that area, if you add it as a delivery service, if it's anywhere near that number. You're letting me look down the screen, it's not big enough.
Well, basically, whoever goes on one chart, at least goes out there and travels that. Can we hear from?
Yeah, well, let me, this is, we're looking at these guys.
The other thing that I want to make sure that we do is that, uh, anybody that comes to our city, delivers to our city, we give them self-tax. So our ordinance should also specify that anybody coming to our city, so, uh, whatever, whatever it is, that is a point of sale of standing. If it's cannabis, we should give them. So that's something we need to amend also. I think the fact that most of these people have already have a system in place, make deliveries. There should be expedited if we get the same moving, if that's what we want to do. If not, fine. But if we decide as a majority to do it, let's get on. And we're doing the right way, making the orders change, making stipulation that we get all the sale tax and to make sure that we can. Go ahead, sir.
She might ask some questions.
Hopefully, of course. Uh, we have two gentlemen, um, I think Devin and. Come on up.
And as other approach, I just want to clarify, we did just review the municipal code and delivery of distinction distribution, retail delivery falls under the six percent sales, uh, six percent tax rate.
Hey, Gary, great. Okay, um, you're up, um.
I'm Devin Julian with Culture Cannabis Club. Good evening, Mayor and staff, thanks for having me.
With the four businesses there, if you guys were, would you be able to do delivery first of all out of your existing location?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Um, so I think, uh, you know, first of all, I want to mention you guys have an amazing city manager to work with. And, um, I know that she came into this after, but it's not fit. She's, she's been there, at least, rest operator in the city, so I want to give her some words to do. Um, yes, absolutely. We actually built the store around being able to do delivery. I think all of the operators that I've spoken with, and I'm close with all of them except one, um, did the same. So, uh, typically and currently, in the way that our, us and our attorney are kind of reviewing and processing what was there, we had assumed that we were going to be able to deliver from day one. So the state allows you to automatically, um, deliver from a storefront retail location unless the city specifically does not allow it or only, or requires you to have a separate turn. So the way that we, and this was done years ago, right, it's been a long process until we got here. Uh, we all had assumed that we were going to be able to launch delivery after opening our storefronts for a bit, having the customers come in and get used to our stores. And then once we have that, now offering it as convenience for those, um, that like it as convenience and you can complain and other things like that. Um, I know one of the operators actually started and then stopped. That was our, uh, all, all of our assumptions when we designed to build these things. So I'm sorry for the long way to the answer, but, um, the city of Stanton does have separate delivery permits, but it didn't restrict us as storefronts to actually deliver from our opinion. So that's why that operator did it. Um, we were preparing as well. We've got cars prepared and we were ready to go. So I actually put in a speaker card to ask that we move this as fast as possible, whatever the fastest uh, path to getting that done is, because I think there's, um, as much revenue as we saw. To answer your question about traffic congestion, they do more than one order at one time. So, um, it's a pizza delivery model, right? So you wait until you have a couple of orders and you go out. And typically, um, those are done over, it's about a ninety-minute handle time before you do deliver. We're not quite thirty minutes like Pizza Hut yet. Um, and we do that for safety and convenience, you know, all.
Have you heard, like, I've heard from some of the businesses on the street in the area about parking. I know you guys don't have enough places for your employees to park, so they do have to park on the street for the most part. But a lot of the businesses continue to complain about not having a place for their employees to park. This will bring more employees in, I would assume.
It would be a couple. Uh, you'd be surprised, it'd only be about two drivers, um, and those vehicles will be moving pretty quickly. Those will be in like a loading and unloading zone, similar to where we're currently intaking in, well, only intaking product. Product goes out the front door, hopefully a customer's hand, but we take product in through the back door, which is already a secured loading area. So it would be another two employees, yes. Um, those vehicles, sometimes if you drive them home and bring them back, so that would reduce the parking demand. I know from Culture Cannabis Club standpoint, we have the most parking kind of in the area and we've been utilizing, um, some other space next to us as well to, uh, reduce that after we. It's a good thing we're busy. It's tough when it's industrial, you know, being put in that industrial area, we're kind of making a. And then, um, sorry, sorry, councilmember, just to touch on that. So distribution is a separate permit, so there's cultivation and manufacturing, creating the good, those are the supply chain. A distributor similar to alcohol has to actually take that and is responsible for a lot of taxing, uh, bar coding, those kinds of things. And then you get it from the distributor, they bring into your retail outlet to then be taken out. So they bring all the brands together, you deal with a handful of distributors, but there's, you know, a hundred brands on our shelf and they all use distributors, very similar to alcohol. So that three percent distribution would be if you had a distributor in town that was doing that, but without the other supply chain uses currently active in the city. It's not really advantageous to have distribution. Usually you're going to have it with a cultivation or manufacturing. Um, like in our case, we're here today hoping to get, um, an extension on that cultivation permit, which I advocate for option three. I think it's, it's a very fair climb as far as the city gets some fees and will be able to invest in that. Uh, but our plan would be to actually distribute out of cities where we already have a distribution license and our operations for our, uh, brands are in that area. So.
So to follow up on you on what you just said, um, if you guys were to make a miracle of operation, you already have your retail, would you go delivering? You wouldn't also apply for distribution.
We have distribution already operating out of Santa Ana, so no, we would not, yeah. No, it would, um, it would be difficult to transition all of the supply chain things, your packaging machines and people and space and all that kind of stuff. And so that's already happening for us personally in our case. We wouldn't also want to make distribution. I was simply giving. You wouldn't put a distributor here without any proximity of some.
Do you foresee, um, having less people come to your storefront and purchase cannabis in person if delivery was an option?
Absolutely, yeah. Um, you know, we're in some of our stores doing about twenty percent of our orders, twenty to twenty-five percent via delivery. It's kind of a strategy to wait, especially in my stores and the experience that we have. Uh, we want people to come in and know that we're there and then get delivery after. So I would say that between ten and twenty percent reduction in the traffic, which has a positive point, would help kind of balance the traffic. We definitely reach outside of the city limits and be attracting a lot more tax revenue. People are in Orange County are trained throughout people, I mean, to do delivery because it's only been Santa Ana. Especially given some of the tourism around here. A lot of people have stood outside with our security guard and I've seen ten Uber's drop off and pick up. Aaron's our manager over there. So, biggest would help reduce people.
I think maybe Culture is the one one in attendance, but Mark Malice, uh, cannabis apologized. He was trying to move on the screen when he thought of traffic. But I can tell you, I'm talking to him, he would echo everything that Dan has said as well.
I would also like to add.
Welcome.
Well, Mayor City Council, appreciate you guys having us today. Uh, my name is Aaron Roy. I'm part of the leadership team at Culture and I'm currently the general manager for his application. I've had absolute pleasure with businesses here for the last year or so. Been amazing working with all of you. Uh, you've been so kind to us and you are super grateful to be part of the community. Uh, I just wanted to add a couple of things here on the database, one of the things I want to address first is we understand how difficult it is with limited parking, I'm sorry, parking in the area. And, uh, the remedy that we actually cleaned up, we locked that is connected to our shop next to the train tracks. Uh, so I am in the process of launching that as the new forty parking lot. So that was done, it should be finalized here by the end of the week, so I'll be able to roll that out this weekend. That will hopefully remedy the parking situation. Another thing I want to touch on is, um, we have multiple calls on a daily basis. It's up to about fifty or people now asking for delivery. And specifically, um, I have a very unique perspective on this because prior to joining Culture, I was the VP of a company called Butterball Technologies and what we did is assisted on-demand transportation for persons with disabilities and elderly. And one thing that I learned there is disproportionately, those two demographics are let out of transportation. They are heavily pinned on either a family member or some outside source of transportation. They don't have access to be able to come to the storefront. And there's two particular cases I want to share with you guys. One of our regulars, he and his wife have been married for over fifty years and unfortunately his wife, her vision is now not so good, so she can no longer leave the house. And it is getting increasingly more difficult for him to be able to also leave the house. And cannabis is one of the things that helps search for instance. So having a delivery service will be able to remedy him not having to come to a storefront anymore. Uh, a second instance that I want to share is a customer that unfortunately he did not come that often. He only lives three miles from here, um, he's a resident in Stanton. And he is a quadriplegic, so he only has access to Dala Rye and Access. And the last time he came to pick up from the shop, he had to wait three and a half hours before a other access vehicle picked him up, just to take him back home. He lives less than two days away. So having a delivery service would help not only those two particular cases, but hundreds of others that I can't speak to because they haven't had the possibility to come to the shop yet. Well, thank you, guys.
Okay, um. This is actually a question for staff. If, uh, at the council, we decide that we want to enable everyone to have a shop and have delivery, what is the timeline for that?
So we would need to make amendments to the municipal code to allow for that. So we would ideally bring that back either the next meeting or the following meeting. Then we, because of his importance amendment, we take the thirty days to go into practice. So let's say, let's be conservative and say it comes back to the council, September meeting in April. And by the end of May, they would be able to apply for that. And then as quickly as they can get, um, that portion of their business up and running. I just want to clarify that staff would write into the municipal code amendment that the retail cannabis business must be in good standing to be eligible to apply for this. And so just some of the criteria, I'm sure there would be more advertising, Crystal, the attorney would be, they have to have a permanent certificate of occupancy. They have to have, if they, if they sign community benefit agreement with the city, it has to be current and they have to be up to date on those contributions. And the regular recurring, uh, cannabis tax payments must be up to date and recurring. So we would check all those boxes and once they were confirmed, then they would be eligible to apply. And application process would be very quick since it would only be launched as four and then they could get started as soon as they could build out the delivery portion. So I guess conceivably by June, they could be offering delivery services.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we, um, have our city staff expediate the speciality camp of the addition to the, um, ordinance given with cannabis. I would also like them to add the other factor that we add that, um, a business coming in from the outside is required to pay sales tax. I don't know how you keep that, keep that in, but I think that we have that to the people who come into our city, like any other business has to have a business license and they have to pay tax.
We'll look into that. I know in my prior city, we worked at like the Amazons of the world and other, um, retailers that do lots of delivery because obviously there's a. that do lots of delivery because obviously there's a core infrastructure and their legal analysis of, I also had a meeting in my prior city that cannot impose a tax on those types of businesses that are just traveling. We will, we will look at it one more time if we are able to, of course, we will certainly bring that back to the council. So let's, let's look into that.
I mean, I'm not.
Let us look into it.
I just, I just say it's our benefit.
Absolutely. Tax revenue to be received. So regardless, we have the six percent no matter where they deliver to, and we don't get that extra one percent.
Because it's a retail sale coming out of our retail outlet.
So it's a difference between getting six percent versus seven percent.
So I believe the extra one percent, it goes to, is it for people who are St. Anton residents or non-St. Anton residents?
We get seven percent no matter what because we have a normal one percent sales tax for all retail sales. We get six percent for the cannabis retail tax. If the delivery is within the city limits, it'll be eight percent because when it's delivered. So our Stanton residents might be purchasing from a place outside of Stanton that will deliver to their Stanton home. I guess we're getting that one percent clearly.
So if, if we get the full, all of the tax, we get our cannabis tax purchased from a retail outlet in Stanton and delivers to a Stanton residential.
HD since we separated this out.
We don't, did we get clarification on, so I heard that you would like us to move more of the amendments to support both recommendations, but I didn't hear if we wanted to do any type of tiered taxing on the extension of the expired cultivation permit.
Let's just hit this. This is a number.
All of that.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's do a little poll now.
Your motion by Mayor Shawna, second by Mayor Ploton Warren, Alana C. Glauw Hallbo, Councilwoman Villan, Councilwoman Torres, Councilwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Ploton Warren.
Yeah.
And Mayor Shawna.
The other comment I'm going to make is the sooner we get that going, sooner we get it back to us, the sooner we can start getting tax revenue to take care of concerns regarding the city. Okay, item two, go ahead.
So the other item on for council consideration this evening is if you would like to direct staff to make municipal code amendments to authorize the extension of the expired cultivation permit. Staff's recommendation if the council does choose to do so is to only allow that to require permitting and not to open up a brand new application process. It is up to the council to determine if you would like to set some type of tiered cannabis candidate on top of that.
Okay, I would like a big comment on this. At this point in time, the ability for, I think, many of our cannabis businesses to take on the challenge of cultivation is very slim. The reason for that is, number one, because of the ability to provide power, just to go get the power for medicine, get dig up to a year to a year and a half. Also, there's investment of at least two and a half billion dollars. Right now, we have four people that have come forward that were interested in. Since then, we're back, we're down to one. The reason for that is, is to my knowledge, of the existing ones that we granted them to, all in one, is they're just moving forward. The other one told me the reason that they don't want to, is they just go a gazillion dollar ones in Santa Ana, so that's their two. I think we talked about this, that the more these pop up, the less likely it is for us to get these in our city. In fact, I think we're at a point where we're lucky if we get our cultivation in our city. And we should do everything to make it enticing enough for people to do that. Because there is revenue, as our city manager said, in what we can come up with. I'm at a point, if there's only, I mean, we can, we can fish if we want, or we can look at the people that we order to, but we only come up with one. I think we should do everything we can to make sure that they're happy, that they get this thing built in time and matter. I'm not sure of making them extend an agreement, which they probably don't even need to do. Because why would you extend an agreement if you know you're the only person in the block? If the city really wants to re-activate culture, they're right back in squirrel and anything. So I'm of the opinion that we don't charge anything, and we just let, you know, put it out there and let's get going.
I just want to clarify, do we there's a second decree that would also be insisted in the extension, or I'm sorry, not delivery cultivation?
I think, I, I think third option. I know it would increase the management, that would be a fair one. Option three, I think that would be more than fair. It would be three years for all the problems, and we live with a certain amount of revenue that's not enough to hurt them really yet. It would at least for.
Move the, you know, and I understand that, that it's logic. Problem is, is we have four of them, right? But we don't have to go all four of them. I know, I know, we do have four of them, right? Okay, so if, if somebody was not to go along with this, right? And not go with that option, what would they get they got? Why would they give up? I mean, there's, there's, there's no pressure on them to do that. Because if they don't do it, any of the other people don't do it. There's, I mean, there's four spots of them, we know we're not going to close. Four spots, there's always going to be a spot for somebody to restart over. And we start over, it's going to take as long as it takes if they're already awarded. It's going to take years if they get. Okay, well, that's.
I'm just not pulling the, you know.
I'm just saying that why would we, why would somebody do option three when they just wait, hope it happens? I hope we don't do that. Go ahead.
Yeah, so this money was promised, right? There was a promise that this is, this is very short, right? That happens like, that's just, because it gets someone back. And because anybody that we don't get tonight, we're using that half way. So I think it's essential that we can have that. And I'm not too against.
No, you're absolutely right. The problem is, whoever you are, decide not to go with this program, that will work.
I mean, they could accept this payment plan.
No, but what if they don't accept the payment plan? We find somebody else, that doesn't limit them to a reapply.
They can start over again.
With everybody starting, even the new people, would be starting over again, it would be the same period of time beginning.
My concern is we're still with the tax.
Okay, thank you. I do understand. To me, to me, it's important. Go ahead.
Hi, name is Mayor. If they don't accept that, we've already given them a couple of extensions. They were given the deadline of November twenty twenty-three, the operation when they haven't been initiated, despite all these extensions. And they're still requesting, I think during the initial application process, it was clear that they would get a couple of extensions at the final deadline of November. So if this was communicated and they've already accepted it and they still can't open, they have the choice to, that's okay. They don't have to open their cultivation in our city. They want to, that's great. But if they don't want to, that's fine too. And it's okay for us to help. I don't think any residents would think that, oh, we have a cultivation business next door, you know, or down the street from where they live. I don't think that would be, I believe, um, if they want to open, that's great, we want to support them, want to make sure we're successful. But if they're not willing to accept that, despite a couple of extensions and despite the deadline that everyone agreed to, they still are not moving, um, then, I think we're giving them options here, and I hope that they will consider taking those options that scare for everybody involved.
So how would you keep the reapply?
You don't have to open it again.
So you just don't want cultivation period?
That's okay. I think, I think we're still kind of seeing how retail, you know, does. I think it's doing really great. I think we're going to see what the delivery does and how that, how it will play out. And then maybe you don't need, maybe you are budgeting. We'll see. But I'm not in a rush to make this happen. I, I want to do what's in the best of the case of options. And it's okay to see this step back and say, okay, we've made it this far, they haven't made the deadlines, we're willing to compromise and give them option one. If they don't want it, that's okay too. Oh, one.
That's a lot of money.
It's, it's not that much money. I mean, it's, I mean, how much money, how much money do you think it costs for the cultivation program?
Yeah, look, I, I get your concerns, right? I understand there's a substantial amount of money invested. But can't just, you know, have our staff that go backwards, give extensions time after time, and then I expect everything to be good. I think that, you know, if they promised this number, right, we should pay more and then just have.
That was a, that was a lot of swimming.
And then that's why they're coming, and he done those extensions. Well, we kind of agree, we just picked the numbers down. I think three would be like more business friendly, but I can sell them too. Yeah, I can sell them too.
Yeah, we all think we can agree to.
Sorry, guys.
Well, I would put this down earlier when she was speaking, long beach, long beach thought that we had gone way above and beyond what everything we could to help these people sell. I told.
All right, let's do three. Let's get three. It's getting scary.
How about a vote? I'll move it to go to option two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Ham and Mr. Dylan, you have your option. You can listen to our oratory, or you can make your presentation, whatever you like. Which one do you, you want to go first?
Uh, we'll hear the presentation first.
Okay. All right, we are now moving on to item number. Okay, I'm going to ask that we move up to item twelve A, because we do have people who want to speak on, or ask twelve B, who probably be able to sort of, that's okay with you. Okay, we're going to move over to twelve B, there's no objection. And this will be the Orange County Fire Authority under new business. This will be your duty for staffing for adequate fire emergency response to the safer grant application. I think that's you.
Don't load out of order.
Good evening on hold, good evening on hold here at the council. Established in the fiscal year two thousand and four National Defense Authorization Act, the SAFER Act authorizes grants to local fire departments for the purpose of increasing staff maintenance. At its February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four OCFA Board of Directors meeting, the board reviewed the annual grant priorities for twenty twenty-four and ultimately directed the OCFa staff to evaluate fire station seven, Gamal Capistrano, eighteen, Peru La Canyon, fifty-seven, Olisolide Hope, forty-five, Rancho Santa Margarita, and forty-six, Stanton, for potential funding for fourth firefighters slash paramedic as part of the FY twenty twenty-three SAFER Grant application. The OCFa utilizes the National Fire Protection Association standard seventeen-ten for the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public by career fire department as an industry standard benchmark. The standard establishes criteria related to the effectiveness and efficiency of emergency operations that come in frequency of the public and fire in the lean. The five fire stations under consideration to the twenty twenty-three SAFER Grant currently staff each shift with three firefighters. The OCFa has stated the following regarding adding a fourth firefighter to each shift. Adding the fourth firefighter, paramedic slash paramedic at the five fire stations would increase effective fire force capabilities that are in line with the NFPA seventeen-ten and increase advanced life support. In addition, in the event of a structured fire, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration requires at least two employees enter the immediate dangers to life and health atmosphere and remain in visual or voice contact with each other at all time. It also requires at least two employees be located outside the atmosphere, thus the term two into mouth. If all five fire stations are awarded by the way fourth firefighter slash paramedic post addition, this would equate to the addition of fifteen firefighters slash paramedics to OCFa's overall staff. If the twenty, sorry, next slide, oh, no. If the twenty twenty-three SAFER Grant is awarded in OCFa, grant funds will cover one hundred percent of the salaries and benefit costs during the three-year period of performance. During the initial three-year period, there is no cost share or match requirement from the city. Beginning in year four, Stanton as a cash contract city will be responsible for the full cost of salaries and benefits as shown on the screen. So the first line has the annual salary for one firefighter slash paramedic. And on the right side of that table, you see the annual benefits cost for one, you see the total salary plus benefits cost, two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred ninety, multiply that by three, and that's going to get to the eight forty-one number. Also on the screen are the recent cash contracts with a forecast of fiscal year twenty twenty-seven twenty-eight. City staff discussed with OCFa staff the commitment that the council would be making by supporting application for twenty twenty-three. If in year four or beyond, the city was unable to make its payments. Although the SAFER Grant is silent in regard to what happens after the initial three-year period, OCFa supports the continued provision of four-person staff enrollment. Regarding next steps, the OCFa staff will be taking your report to the March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Board of Directors meeting this Thursday, seeking board approval to submit an application for the twenty twenty-three grant. That concludes my staff report, and I will be able to answer any questions. I believe Chief Dolan is also on Zoom, he was teaching a class today, so it's out of the area. Confirmation from the city board, counting yes, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. And in addition, Captain Chris Kuzeliak is here in prison as well.
Is it a sure thing to convert?
I've been talking to OCFa staff, it feels like a sure thing they've applied for this again in previous years for other cities and have received grant.
Probably the first thing we should do is help the OCFa make the grant. Now, whatever we decide to, it's, it's important that we, all the contracts that get together in the grant. Once we get the grant, we can find out whether or not this is a good idea or we can discuss that.
For Hannah. Hannah made some really good comments on this grant earlier today, and one of them was, do we as a council want to saddle a council three years from now, four years from now with an eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollar debt to Orange County Firefighters Association? So maybe one way that we could think of it is, when, apply for the grant, if we get it, allocate two hundred thousand up to three hundred thousand per year for those three years. So when the fourth year comes and the bill comes due, we have the money for it then, and then whatever that council decides we can afford from there, at least we're not getting them with this gigantic bill all at once. So that, that was my thought.
Great.
So I'm, I'm looking at the contract prices of twenty twenty-one. Has it always been three firefighters all those years?
Yes. We've always been able to. See, we have, we're very fortunate today, I'm doing division of the guy and she did, because they're very able to give us people that need training, or people that are going on your evaluation, plus we also can throw it with overtime. So there's some different types of options we do there.
So even with overtime, you only have three hours, is that right?
No, if you have overtime, you can go four times. I mean, that's the way we can do it. Basically, in a way, I think the way we've been throwing it, perhaps an hour with the boards by having someone to train these guys. That's the whole part. And we have a lot of good stations because we're very busy, so it's very good for operating through.
Great. In one of our more properties for getting years, OCFa bent over backwards and thought out of the box, has to every which way that we'd be working, where we would have, and we've never had enough. Yeah. But they, they really tried to help us. So I would like to support that.
So you're saying we go with this, but we set aside maybe a hundred thousand every year?
I think two hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand every year. So by the end of the fourth year, or by the time the third year comes, we're, we're, the fourth comes, we have to know, you would have a few hundred thousand dollars for the special plan.
It would be one year we need to pay.
Right, but it's, it's eight hundred thousand.
For three years, but for, for each year, can we?
Right, so.
No, oh, no.
You're going to pay an extra eight hundred for each year starting.
Oh.
So if we do. So if we do savings account for three years, we get paid for the fourth year, whatever council is there at that time, don't. You know, they can decide.
Everybody.
Oh, okay. Um, we can decide then, if we can afford it going forward, but at least that would do us four years. Three of which, we're not paying to the outside world. We're just putting it in a rainy day fund.
So we'll create an OCFA reserve fund and, so if if we were to take that action, then automatically this year, not even as part of the council decision package. Directions might be automatically set any, even if it's not a request, set aside two hundred thousand dollars.
I also thought that we might be able to, in the first year. If we were paid for one, just paid for one, the first year paid for one, the second year paid for three, and the third year, that was available for reserve.
So I thought that up to, uh, to OCFA staff, they said they could not commit to that. They said there is a possibility that for that, they suggested that the best way to go about that would be in that year, year four. If the city of Stanton council at the time determined they were unable to pay. They would send their representative to lead their case before the board. Perhaps the board would consider stair stepping costs then, but they would not commit to that.
And the ratio between structural fire and cities and contracts. Post it's up to two thirds. You know, it comes out of the public.
If we were to act, what we personate to our units. Slash one where prices were. Um, right now, we have three, right, and that means I have three lawyers who respond, you know, to a bigger free agency. So then that would be way, you know, more available units to go handle more of our emergencies and time check.
That's professional reasons, so that's a good point. The other thing also is, is that, which you probably don't realize, is that if we're talking either, you say you couldn't do anything else.
Eight hundred and forty in your ones.
Okay, okay, so after it's a million, close to a million, two. Because it's going to go up, see after changes, annual increase, that's built into everything.
I thought overtime, we've got a good relationship. As we were talking about, we had very difficult times, you know, council, they fed up with us. I would see why not, you know, rest. And I do like, uh, council member Warren's, um, you know, idea about separating a little bit of money. You know, on top of this price that comes, but I am pretty certain that we're going to have our, you know, we're going to be networked. Um, there are, obviously, the the OCFA wants to keep more people, right, per per unit if it comes out. And, um, I think that the others who are surrounding cities as well. When they're surrounding cities, uh, as your fire halls, they have four persons in it, but when we answer to their calls, we only have three persons. So I think it's essential for us to, you know, maintain that, that, uh, you know, that consistency across the country.
But I think too, what we're discussing here is if we go ahead and do it, which is fine. And we can come up with a way to phase in, we can look at the base, create reserves, and then we can help us up the grade. Main thing though is that we really need to support it either way, so that we can join the rest of the contract cities in supporting this. And inviting the OCFA to help with this. At least you get your grant, right on.
Mayor Schauer, since he's been on council quality. I'll just, I'll give a, um, back question. Can you recall a time in which we had more than three people? We reduced it to three?
Um, the only thing we ever, the only thing we ever offered to you was about two thousand and twelve. I would think there was, uh, OCFA was facing bankruptcy. So they came to us and asked us if we wanted to take one of my twenty cents. And we agreed to do that, and it was seriously, we didn't go bankrupt, so we had to lose. We've been doing really good with, you know, we've stepped up to the plate on a lot of things. Uh, we did that when we had our, uh, we gotta realize that our utility users tax, every penny of that goes with the lease part of it. So we've done a good job, you know, supporting both of our protective services. Uh, like I said, I think the most important thing is, is getting a pass. And I think we can see that with our staff, that's great to face in over a period of time. And, um, you know, who knows what the future bears? I just know that we don't know what the economy's gonna be like. And we're not real sure about what, um, you know, what increases we're gonna have. Remember, there's a lot of other factors. There's negotiations at the end of three years with the union. That would break. Uh, Chief Dolan, do you have anything to say at this time?
Mayor Schauer. Sorry, I have an echo here. Uh, Mayor Schauer in council, thank you for allowing me to address. It's a little muffled and difficult to hear everything, but a couple of things of clarification. I thought I heard somebody mention that the engine is currently a four-person engine, and I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, for engine forty-six is a three-person or three firefighter staff daily. Or, uh, three post positions is how, uh, per shift. Um, in regards to the fiscal impacts that I've been hearing discussed. So the, as stated correct, the first three years, the Safer Grant will cover the post position or one firefighter, paramedic per shift. For three firefighters for the first three years, one hundred percent. Um, after that time, it would be fiscal year twenty, uh, excuse me, I'm going to refer my notes. Uh, twenty eight, twenty nine is when we would be looking at the city encumbering the costs of that position. I am, can't negotiate the contracts, but there has been past cities when we have, uh, implemented a similar, uh. Safer Grants with cash contract cities, uh, those cities were able to, uh, phase in those costs over, uh, years of time, um, up to eight years. So that fully encumbered eight hundred and forty one thousand dollars that you saw for the three firefighter positions. Uh, could be phased in, uh, over a course of up to eight years. So that's something that, uh, the city would negotiate with the OCFA. Um, and I don't have a part of that right now. I can't speak on that behalf of what that looks like, but that is, uh, those are options to. Help limit that impact to the city, um, budget with, uh, not being encumbered that full eight hundred and forty one thousand dollars, uh, that fourth year. Or that first year after that Safer Grant expires.
What's the effect on forty-six EMS? Is that going to be a positive thing for that?
I'm sorry, Mayor Schauer, could you repeat that one time, Ryan?
Hard time hearing it, speaking in the mic.
Steve, um, would the positive effect of this also, uh, affect EMS forty-six to what degree?
Yes, that's a great question. So currently out of fire station forty-six, we have the three engine forty-six, which has the three firefighters on it, which is a paramedic assessment unit. And we have squad forty-six or medic forty-six, which has two firefighter paramedics. By adding this fourth position, um, not only does it standardize our, the rest of the OCFA, uh, with all of our other units that are four, uh, person, um, units. It would add a additional medic unit, um, to the city of Stanton. Which would increase the EMS service delivery model to the residents of, uh, Stanton as well, because now we would have two dedicated medic units for the city of Stanton and their citizens.
Okay, Maggie, I just wanted to make sure that you like, you right now.
What I'm hearing from the chief is that with other cities that have, um, gotten Safer Grant. That OCFA was able to phase in over the course of eight years, fully encumbered cost. Uh, is is there any way we can get that in writing for our city as well?
I requested that, and they said they could not commit to it at this time, that the appropriate time for that request would be the first year that we would be responsible for the costs. Based upon our financial situation, that the city of Stanton's OCFA representative should bring that request to the board at that time. I did request a commitment in writing.
But, uh, Mr. Mayor, as you've been on the OCFA one month and many, many years, and you've seen other cities proceed the Safer Grant act. Pay that whole cost again. Years. Have you also seen that almost all cities get that patient system, pay that or?
There were some cities that have appropriated that successfully, so we wouldn't be the first people to do it. It's, uh, there's been a precedent that's been set. You know, the bottom line is, is that, um, I think the thing that's, that interests me the most, you've been able to survive with the three, that's right. Because we've been able to get, you know, trainees to come on board, we've been able to do okay, and we've never had a problem. But the fact that it's serving such a better impact, our EMS, I think that's what we show the public in the most bad. And remember, the reason why we have our public safety tax and also utility tax is to pay for things like that. And soon as we get delivery and catalyst, we'll be able to pay for it. Anything else, guys? Okay, I'm I'm gonna call up, uh, Mr. Dolan, please.
Dolan's on the, um. We'll go first, Mayor Schauer, if you don't mind.
Of course. I can let you go in three.
Good evening, Mayor Schauer. My name is Chris Ham. I'm, uh, union president for Orange County Professional Firefighters.
I'm so sorry, the microphone was.
You want it in my eyes right here?
Just needs to be, yeah.
Perfect, how's that? There we go. Okay, let's start over. Good evening, Mayor Schauer and City Council. My name is Chris Ham. I'm president of Orange County Professional Firefighters and a leader to a global number of women that serve this community every day. Before we begin, I just want to say thank you to the mayor for pushing this item ahead. As you know, a couple of our members are here this evening to speak about it. Back to work at our fire stations and first thing tomorrow morning. That being said, I'm here to speak in support of Stanton's recommendation for the Safer Grant. This grant is crucial to ensure the safety of your residents. If approved, it will increase staffing on your engine from three to four firefighters. This will ensure engine forty-six of the first arriving unit has the ability to execute an interior fire attack. This grant is approved without the inclusion of the city of Stanton, it will be the only three-person staffed unit in OCFA jurisdiction. As it stands today, every unit that surrounds Stanton, including Garden Grove, Westminster, and Anaheim, are staffed with four firefighters. This federally funded program will increase safety for the residents of Stanton and the greater Orange County community. I recognize the financial burden placed on the city at the conclusion of this grant. While I do not speak for the OCFA or its twenty-five member board, I am confident that working collaboratively with city staff and OCFA. Can work towards a solution to minimize the fiscal impact while ensuring the safety of Stanton residents. OC firefighters consider themselves a partner to all municipalities we serve, will always work to ensure the financial solvency of every city. We hope you'll support the Safer Grant application with inclusion of engine forty-six in the city of Stanton. I I could just add to a couple of the comments that I heard this evening. Really good dialogue. As I was a council member for the city of San Clemente, the last time the OCFA applied for Safer Grant, we were one of the cities. The cash contract that was able to finance, uh, this increase over a eight-year span of time. While I know that you haven't been able to get an official agreement in writing from the OCFA. One of the things that I talked about with the mayor and a couple of our council members this afternoon was the ability to, uh, phase in this approach. Overtime positions, have the both the dedicated positions after the three-year federal program ends. Create additional savings to the city of Stan- Stanton while also bearing true and full costs. So it wouldn't be any kicking from the structural fire plant. That being said, I I share Mayor Schauer's perspective on, this has been done in the past, the president's been set, and I think you guys will be successful in achieving this well. We are always here to be a partner with the city. If we do see a financial struggle like we did out of the recession, we're here to work with the city of Stanton. Thank you.
Chris, why aren't you explaining that, basically, very heavy overtime? Uh, what would be the savings and how that could spread out of the period?
Yeah, so, uh, first things first, I just need to address this, this salary slide here. I'm a fire captain organization. I've been here for seventeen years. My base salary is a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, so I'm not sure where the salary ramps up, so I I don't want the number to skew your opinions of what a firefighter is made. They don't do that. Uh, but ask me again, Mayor Schauer, what was your question?
Could you go over how?
Oh, thank you. So the federal grant will apply for the first three years, so it'll be no cost to the city of Stanton. Uh, in year one, outside of the grant, so year four, basically, two of the positions would be fully funded by overtime. It would be staffed by full ten percent, so you wouldn't have the burden cost of the annual benefits associated with it. And then in year five, one of the positions would be, um, paid for in overtime, and then year six would be the full burden cost. All the positions would be fully funded by the city of Stanton. So that's a, a situation which the city of Stanton still carries the full burden, but it really draws that out of sixteen percent.
So we actually can cause two firefighters to go about the, almost three years and put that aside?
Exactly. So did the paydown plan that, uh, Mayor Proton Moore was speaking of, you you have that ramped up time. The only other comment I'd like to address is council member Van brought up, they noticed you had concern about the charges compared to what fees aren't, it doesn't add up. So the one piece, I think the chief clarified on the line was, so currently, the engine company is staffed with three firefighters every day. But you also have a paramedic Van staffed with two firefighters. So that's where the differential of the points come from. Thank you, sir.
Mayor and Council, if I can please clarify the dollar numbers since it was questioned, so that number was provided to me by. Assistant Chief Robert Porten, and you have to take into account, this is the number for fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine. The components that go into that are regular salary at a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, holiday pay at five thousand seven hundred dollars. FLSA adjustment at twenty-nine hundred dollars, the M T bonus at ten thousand two hundred dollars. Paramedic bonus at seventeen thousand dollars. Company officer certificate pay, which is depends on individual educational incentive at fifty-six hundred dollars. All of these subpays may not be included, but they did want to give us the most realistic conservative number, also included in that one sixty-eight numbers. Vacation time sick leave backfill at twelve thousand four hundred dollars. And I don't know what, oh, maybe P M means nighttime, P M bonus on the time now is twelve hundred dollars, so I can provide this detailed breakdown to the council.
Thank you, Senator. I wasn't trying to call you. I just want to clarify.
I'm just a data person. I have to make sure that my numbers are valid and accurate.
It I it wasn't intended to be, I I wasn't trying to take what you're powerful. Very good, thank you.
That's why we're most physically solvent, sitting in Orange County. That lady, that lady. Anyway, um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we fully support the application, uh, of the grant. Okay, I'm going to put this one else if I'd like to speak. You guys okay? Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, at this time, that we fully, um, support the application process. I know we brought it to all six of our congressional people. Uh, once we get it, I think when brought back to us, we can explore the methodology of what our costs will be. Um, how we can, uh, phase it in if we want to. Have a better understanding of what the actual savings will be with overtime, and, uh, how we're gonna be able to work that out now. My question first with overtime, even though it's less than having a full-time person. Uh, are we going to be, end up having to pay for that overtime? Uh, that was never answered. So those are the kinds of questions that we need to ask. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we move forward, at least since we face one. And then also, uh, as soon as it gets back to us, we'll have an opportunity to take a look at it. See where our venture is, take a look at the ways we can fund it, take a look at the ways we can save it. And by then, they will have delivery, and I'll help us make the difference.
Also do.
Okay.
Uh, I have a request. Can you modify your motion to include that we will start a separate, um, fund? And for me in that fund? Just for, um, just to have it there when you.
You know, I fully support that. That's great. So we can actually make that part of the package that we get the whole program. Okay. Yeah, in other words, once it comes back to us, not only will we do that, but we can see how much we have to actually do at that point. But I think it's the main thing, it's us getting the grant, and then we'll have a chance to go back and take away the fiscal. Find out where our savings are, and then find out how we want to set up that reserve account, and where the money is. Okay, vote for him, please.
Councilor Van, yes. Councilor Montores, Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Warren.
Yes.
And Mayor Schauer.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll go. Comes back to eleven A of the unfinished, the, the unfinished business. The purpose of this report is to review options for recommending brandy and messaging the ad hoc make the secret. City council starts have a seal or a motto as part of the next phase of the city branding and messaging.
Thank you, Mayor and Councils. Uh, we are at the next phase and have an update from you from when we last met. I want to start off with, I have committee Mayor Proton Warren and Councilwoman Taylor that have got listed in this conference. And we have three new options for you to review. I want to introduce, uh, Assistant Manager Ashley King to go over the smoke the project and her options that makes sense.
You forgot the other number, John.
Good evening, Mayor Schaub, members of the city council. As Director Bogdanian mentioned, I am here to give you an update on the city's brand new project. Just to quickly review tonight's report in brief and recommended action. Uh, tonight's report in brief, the purpose of this report is to review options recommended by the branding and messaging ad hoc committee to seek city council. Okay, wouldn't agree with a little comedic relief. Uh, okay, seek city council selection of a seal and motto as part of the next phase of the city's branding and messaging project. Our recommended action this evening is that the city council declare the project to be categorically exempt under CECL, and then to select a seal and motto to move forward with the next phase of the branding and messaging project. As a reminder, those phases of the project are Phase One, Research and Brand Strategy, which we completed, uh, this fall. Phase Two, Brand Messaging Development, which will be complete this evening with the selection of a city motto. Phase Three, Development of the Visual Brand, which will be complete this evening with selection of a city seal. Phase Four, Brand Guidelines and Training, which we have just begun, and Phase Five, The Brand Rollout, which is slated for next fiscal year. So right now, we are in the development of the branding guidelines and training, which will be the city's style guide. And I'd like to quickly review some of that first draft. This is some of our guideline mockups, um, so this is how we will use the city logo, um, in print and digital media, so that logo can be used horizontally and vertically, and there'll be different, um, iterations of that logo for each city department. They've also provided design mockups. These are just different ways to utilize the designs that they've provided. Um, all of these designs use that S curve at the bottom of the S and the bottom of the N, um, in both digital print and the kind of real-world applications. They've also provided application mockups for the brand and the logo, um, so our signage on our city uniforms, on our vehicles, and on our print media. At the city council meeting in December, uh, the city council has selected this logo and this colorway to move forward with, with the brand new project. And tonight, I have for you two seal options. Uh, we've been working with the ad hoc committee, Mayor Proton Warren, and Councilmember Taylor, and HUB, uh, to develop these last two city seals. Um, below is the colorway selected to move forward, so these will be the new colors of the city, and in the center is the new city logo. We have two options for you, one in that curvy, the blue color, and one in, in emerald green. And then we have one other decision for this evening. Uh, these are two city motto options, Together Towards Tomorrow and Pride Progress Vision, also developed by the ad hoc committee. Our next steps are to select a city seal and a city motto to move forward with. I'd like to thank the ad hoc committee for all their time in the last few months. I'd like to give you both the opportunity to speak before we discuss.
It's been a lot of fun, uh, we started this a year and a half ago and took about six months to find an agency to work with.
Absolutely.
It's been quite a bit, there was a lot of downtime. But I, I'm glad we're at, uh, three square we are now.
If you look at the city seal, um, what it does is it gives homage to that Stanton was a railroad town when we started. In fact, one of the big housing developments in the town was called like Five Trax and Five Railroads or something. And, um, then we had the Pacific Electric Line, that's why Stanton Central Park has a railroad theme to it. So we're just giving homage to that. Um, the sun above it, it's an emerging sun, it's a brand new day, Stanton's moving forward, we're progressive. And the agency, that's the, the imagery that the other agency, um, came up with, so it was used with the seal. In this seal, one thing that happened that we kind of added to it, it has a hidden S. You look at the top right, you'll see the line above Stanton, and the curves around, across, and down, and back up. So there's a hidden Stanton letter S there, which you can have fun with for different events, for, you know, in the future. So that was one thing, and then the other is the agency had established in nineteen fifty-six. We took a look at all the other different, um, seals that cities were using in Orange County, and for Stanton, considering that we were established in nineteen eleven, or founded in nineteen eleven, and maybe you could call us established, we just, um, did incorporate this nineteen fifty-six. And only one other city in the Orange County has. So that's explaining the, the thought behind the seal. In the, in the, um, motto, we were screwing around and John called up, do you have those with you? It was really fun, we called up Chat G P T, and we asked Chat G P T's opinion on the two mottos. And what Chat G P T said was really interesting, I don't know if you have it on your phone or your Skype. It, it was just, you know, it, it's an impartial opinion. No, just read it. Sorry.
I'll just say for the record, this is not how I do my schoolwork. Uh, the motto?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I just have to pronounce by as depending on leading emotions in the chat. And as for the motto options, Together Towards Tomorrow suggests unity and collective movement in the future, which could be powerful for our community, Pride Progress Vision communicates and strong values and forth, which would be very motivating. Are you looking for the one where it fits between the two?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chat G P T, um, this is Chat G P T's suggestion, if I were to choose, I might lean towards the first seal included in Orange, and my pro motto is "Pill," which could signify a progressive and energetic community. As for the motto, I'd be drawn to Together Towards Tomorrow because it emphasizes unity and shared journey to the future, suggesting collaboration and collective goal, which could be a very inspiring first choice.
See, now we're a present council, use AI. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I may.
The coed in me does apply the word, I think it needs to be another iteration, so if I might, uh, use the whole, as it suggests, pride, period, purpose, period, progress, period, that be okay?
Sure, please.
Yes, I, I think what the, I, I just want it to be consistent, and I think we can be very poetic about it. There's already alliteration with the other option, why not? Yeah, pride, purpose, progress.
Pride, pride.
Pride and purpose, progress. And I did ask Chat G P T if they thought that was awesome, that was awesome too.
My students did a lot of damage. I definitely think that each year I have a purpose or progress after which, which she probably told me she wants to take the job, I know that she's got, anyway, it's visions, visions, she come, yeah, visions, she come.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying pride and purpose, and then progress, yeah.
I like Together Towards Tomorrow. Oh, I think it has, yeah.
So it's a three, three Ps versus three Ts. There you go. The name, the, the motto is, it's very human. It's very, it's very human.
It's kind of difficult to say.
Have any heard of one tomorrow?
Together Towards Tomorrow.
Tomorrowland, yeah, like, it feels like I'm walking.
But which one do you like?
Um, I'd say like the fire markers, I'm assuming Mark told you, but I feel like the change of our motto is still the most
That's okay, that's good.
No, the idea was to make it, just keep you guys a few choices, so we might spend all our time in this area.
But I like that the pride, um, kind of pays homage to our current.
That's why it's up there, I mean, there were dozens of other mottos. Yes. If you're gonna use the motto, when you could go together towards the future.
Is it a larger?
I mean, if you wanted to take out. I think we're all like, top. Pride, purpose, which is she, yeah.
Pride, progress, purpose, right?
Pride, purpose. You have to include the periods.
What do you think, John?
You want me to ask Chat G P T? Please don't.
How about you, today, the rest of them? It's gonna be pride, purpose, progress.
Okay.
For your gentleman? But that was easy.
Well, now we have to pick green or blue.
I like the blue.
I like a better one, I like green, I, I, I insisted green, but up there, but now when I see the two together, I like the other one.
That's our, that's our flag.
You're so nice of that.
Why were you thinking of any flag?
Oh, we had to our city colored. It used to be our city. And the bird of paradise.
No more birds of paradise, bird of home.
Jack, no.
No, we have the K R C.
And on flowers, my child. Trees, it's Jack, the random tree.
Our seal option. It's a blue one.
Blue, we love it, blue.
So can I motion that we take the blue seal and we do our motto, pride, period, purpose, period, progress, period?
I'll second it.
You're the half of it.
How about the, uh, how about the? Flower?
No, we're keeping the flower, we're not changing that.
That's it, that's it, part of the.
Something to decide.
Somebody.
Wait, vote on the motion? Let's just do the vote, guys.
Motion by, uh, Councilmember Van, a second by Councilmember Taylor for the motto option, purpose, period, guide. Pride, period, purpose, period, progress, period, with the periodical blue seal option, all in favor, all aye. Any opposed, hearing that aye to passes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm agreeing.
Not even that.
We can use, uh, this is the city seal, so I mean, as far as city graphics go, you can mark a flower and make one. That's a foul.
I am thirteen, sir.
Hey, Shaq wants to go home, Charlie, okay, where are we?
I am thirteen, home, vacation, public.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to address this at this time? Okay, you're right now, first public hearing. Great communications, we have none. Mayor, Chairman, initiate your business. Radio reports.
I have an announcement. Um, we had the Americana Awards last weekend, and Chief Domon was there, and the Americana is, it's like black tie is suggested, strong. Well, Chief Domon read it, that black tie was mandatory, and Chief Domon went out and had just a breath thinking out. So we were thinking we should change his name to Dapper Domon because of how outstanding he looked at the Americana Awards.
He was the best dressed person right now.
So, I need to see that.
But he looked great.
Oh, by the way, his picture will be certain that you don't see that again.
We'll help you out.
So we have that.
It'll make a re, great retirement gift.
No, no. Although you're just like a painter. I always thought it was pretty.
And, and Mr., uh, Councilmember Ramirez, past Councilmember Ramirez, with very gracious, with a great job. And then one last thing, I want to thank our Public Works Department because first, we happened to be out on Beach Boulevard when one of our lovely stand drivers who just had a tad too much to drink ran into a fire hydrant and knocked it five hundred foot down the road. And so police was there, fire was there, but the man of the hour was the poor guy for Public Works that had to shut that thing off. That's the second time I've seen it, and that's the most miserable job on the planet, it's always on a nice cold night, and you're freezing to death. But Public Works, great, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'll let the staff know as well, thank you very much.
Okay, um, I was just, uh, does anyone want to talk about Saturday real quick?
Mayor, so we, uh, we are monitoring the weather, it's not really favorable for a large community event. Um, we're looking to hold off on the decision as close as possible, and we'll, you know, as a plan B, maybe we'll have some dry rub options for people to do, uh, take home a con, and take some goodies home, and hopefully celebrate on Sunday with their families. Otherwise, magically, the weather shifts, we will carry on, we have a ton of vendors, our community members, and egg cons for all areas, and our Easter wedding, so I'll notify the council and, and we'll send out a communication with the public as well. Um, hopefully by Thursday night, as staff has to prepare for Saturday morning.
Okay, I was just like to, to advise for the future, uh, to keep a look at our pilot programs, just accept our pilot program, check how effective it's been, uh, what we can do to improve it, um, and its value, so I think it's about time to do that, give us a little insight.
It, it is scheduled for a future.
Okay. I like that, like. Never go out without a light. Okay, um, future study session. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm going to try and speak.
City attorney?
No, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Um, I'd like to introduce at this time our new battalion chief, Mayor Bear. Come on up and tell us all about yourself.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Brian Bear, I am new to Battalion Eight, just recently promoted about three weeks ago. I've been in the fire service for twenty years. I started with the city of Santa Ana as a reserve, and then transitioned to full-time firefighter there, and then subsequently became a firefighter here at OCFA. Personal life, uh, I went to UC Santa Barbara, graduated with Charlie, small world. We're involved that, yes, we had a reunion in, in, uh, in the city hall here a couple of weeks ago, so that was, that was fun. Uh, family-wise, I've been married for eighteen years, Huntington Beach with my wife and my fifteen-year-old daughter and fourteen-year-old son. And my free time, I enjoy coaching, surfing, fishing, spend a time with my family.
And you'll be out at station, division.
Battalion Eight at Station sixty-one, just right up the street.
Well, welcome aboard, and very happy on your, right, on your, your ranking.
I'm sorry?
I said we're very happy with your new appointment.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, looking forward to working with all of you.
We're gonna come up, hard up, it's, uh, we're giving you a stand, we're giving you two, because you're right. Thank you.
Former, sir.
Former mayor, there's two, there's two. Two for his kid, one for his wife. Has to prove that he is a senior.
Thank you. Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, another briefing report from our next chief, please. Charlie, you're up.
Just before I say that, um, it had been probably ten years since I've seen Brian. And I walk in and I see him, uh, we went to the same turn together, we went to the same school together, and so it's just fantastic to see him. Uh, we have a lot of family friends, and so, uh, again, it's been, it's, the last couple of weeks has been a treat with everybody that I've talked to, so. It's certain. All right, Mr. Mayor, City Council, um. So the month of February, uh, we responded to one thousand two hundred and fifteen calls for service, a sandwich of forty-three per day. Uh, while we were not being assigned calls, we, um, we observed three hundred and twenty-one violations of law, um, they were issued, you know, citations for being in jail. Deputies arrested sixty-nine people, um, that is way up from last month, uh, by about twenty. And out of those sixty-nine, there were eighteen felony bookings, thirty-eight misdemeanor bookings, ten more arrests, and three DUI bookings. Uh, the deputies also, um, gave off forty-seven, um, misdemeanor citations, the Stanton Motor Deputy issued a hundred and fourteen traffic citations. Um, and then, uh, our gang unit, they arrested four, a total of six in twenty twenty-four. We have seen a rise in our gang activity, uh, we have seen a rise in our shootings as well. Uh, so throughout, um, the last probably month, um, there's been a lot of plainclothes here, there's been a lot of gang officers here, there, there's been a lot of plainclothes SWAT guys here, uh, just for that. Uh, so I can tell the residents, uh, that we're taking all precautions possible to make sure that, you know, the shootings don't happen. Uh, for, um, the month of February, um, the Stanton deputies held uh, three robberies, twelve violent assaults, five burglaries, forty-two thefts, six stolen vehicles, and then twenty-nine drug offenses. Uh, so and again, the drug offenses is up, um, seen, seen lately that the fentanyl, um, kind of bad batch, we've seen a lot. Uh, you know, you know, calls pertaining to that. Uh, so again, you might think with fentanyl, it's extremely dangerous, uh, so for the residents, you know, you know, uh, please stay away from that stuff. For investigations, uh, they were given seventy-nine total cases, and they currently have twelve open and they closed forty-five. And just for two, it's, um, you know, it's incredible how fast that the two guys. Um, with that, we said, investigator partner, uh, he just left Stanton, uh, he's gonna be another detail now, uh, we got, um, he's gonna be employed here shortly, um. Investigator Pembley, he was a deputy here for five years, um, he's been on the gang detail for the last four, um, so he's coming back to Stanton. He actually wanted to come here, um, he's very excited to be back, um, he gets along, and he'll be a great addition, you know, to the investigation team. Um, for the special enforcement team, a very, very busy month. They arrested thirty-five, uh, twenty-one felonies, fourteen, um, those are misdemeanors. Uh, they contacted, uh, fifty probationers, uh, ten parolees, uh, two prostitutes. Um, they recovered five stolen vehicles, they, um, seized two firearms, um, and then there was two police enlarges. Uh, so that was really, really good by them. Uh, the response times for this month, um, uh, the priority one was four minutes and fourteen seconds, and that's the best number you can get. Um, priority two was thirteen minutes and eleven seconds, and then priority three was twenty-two minutes and thirty-six seconds. With the priority three calls, when that number comes down, that means that they're able to get to call to call to call if you know, in a faster than, you know, in a faster fashion. Uh, and that's one of the things that I look at, you know, uh, you know, as being achieved. All right. This is the last piece of promise. Um, I want to thank the city for being, you know, you know, such great partners to the Sheriff's Department. The recruitment that we have here now is up, um, I have people that want to work here that wouldn't have spoken. Um, so, uh, which is, which was, it's kind of fun, um, we have three new deputy sheriffs starting in the month of May. Uh, so that's gonna be kind of interesting. Um, Sergeant Robert Watt, he's the new sergeant that I have, um, him and I were tactical officers together at, you know, at the Sheriff's Academy. Uh, so every time we see him, we, our voices kind of elevate a little bit, uh, thinking we're back at the academy. Uh, but, um, he worked in North, uh, knows Stanton very well, um, he lives right down the street, uh, so that's a huge addition, uh, to our team. Um, so like I said, I'm, I'm looking forward to working with him. Uh, this is my last presentation to the city. Um, and I gotta read this because I, uh, I actually wasn't writing to it, so. Um, it's my last presentation, and I want to thank each and every one of you for my time as the camp, and you know, as the captain of Stanton Police Services, um, I really want to thank all the residents for working with me. Uh, I never felt like it was us against them, it was actually a team, and it was really, really fun. Um, there have been several improvements, uh, this made over the past twenty-two months, you know, with regards to, you know, the police services. Um, I'm very proud of that. Uh, the teamwork has been vital, and I truly want to thank Hannah, um, for guidance, for leadership, and for educating me on the city government and city politics. I really appreciate that. Um, I'm in, I'm more of a student, um, I'm not, I don't play the police chief, I feel like I'm always learning, and I want to thank you for that. I learned a lot from you, and I respect what you do, and I respect you, so I want to thank you for that. Uh, to Jim, uh, I've truly had a blast, um, he makes me laugh, um, and we get to talk about stuff on a professional level that's, I think, you know, um, it makes, makes us better, uh, uh, thank you for that. Uh, to the city council, um, we do some good things together, um, we've been a part of the team. Um, I did, I never felt like I was working for you guys, I felt like I had to work for you guys, so I want to thank you for that. Um, I think we made a difference. It's kind of like I told the mayor, um, it's one team, and it's one family, and that's how I truly felt these last twenty-two months. And to the mayor, um, thank you for your support, um. We had some really good conversations, um, I've learned a lot from you sitting down here on what it takes to be, you know, you know, kind of a leader for the next generation. Uh, so thank you for your leadership, thank you for what you've done for me personally. Um, and like I told you on the phone, uh, I'm in a master's program right now, and one of my papers actually wrote about you. Uh, so I want to say thank you. I think in closing, um, I will always be available to the city of Stanton, uh, it's probably one of the best jobs I think I've had. Uh, I know I'm not out of here until, uh, the nineteenth of April, uh, but I really wanted to spend this last little bit just to say thank you to everybody, uh, to all the city staff, uh, it's been fantastic. And, uh, with the new chief coming in, uh, I've known him for twenty years, um, we were on the SWAT team together, uh, we actually have the academy together. Uh, we know each other personally, um, and I think the city of Stanton, you know, at least for the police services, you know, is in good hands. Uh, so thank you so much, Hannah. I'm, uh, here to answer any questions.
Um, just make sure you make your last statement.
I will.
Why is it? Yes? Yes.
Will you come up? First of all, we appreciate you sitting here for two and a half hours, so could you come up and introduce yourself, please, so we know who you are?
Hello? Hi, uh, Chris, I'm easy, I've, I've been in, uh, actually Battalion Eight, Division Seven, as Steve's admin captain for, it's coming up on eleven months. It seems like an eternity working with Steve sometimes. Been in the fire service.
I heard that.
Been in the fire service for twenty years, uh, most recently, uh, came from the city of Santa Ana as a ninja captain. Uh, I'm involved in multiple programs within the organization, I'm on the hazard incident management team, and also on the game of incidents support team. My free time, when I do have it, I enjoy spending with my family, my wife, uh, she's celebrated twenty years in April. Uh, and then my three sons, one is in the Air Force, uh, in, uh, Maryland right now, the K nine officer, and a bomb's gonna be about. And then my other two children, uh, still at home, waiting for them to get off the, they can count. Other than that, uh, enjoy to be here, uh, helping the city of Stanton and the other state of the service. Thank you.
We always give the word from here to here.
Thank you.
When I was recruiting the city of Santa Ana to come to the OCFA, it was a smart move because look what we got. Santa Ana, right there, two good ones. Anyway, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, just take a quick brief moment, I just want to say, uh, to Michelle, what an awesome financial report, uh, you prepared this year. Um, I had a chance to look at the percentages of the whole document. I mean, you just gave us a really short presentation, and as I looked at the numbers, we're in really good shape. I want to thank you for that, okay? Crystal, whoever that guy was, he did a great job for us. So let him know, okay? And thank you for bringing that together. He, he's a good one. Whether it rains or snows, we'll be there with you on Saturday. Uh, Chief, um, again, thank you, we'll be talking more about that at our next meeting. You're doing a great job on the streets, I saw you surfing people out in the middle of, uh, Knight Avenue, drunk and trapping. For what I don't know, but it was exciting. And Jim is always, I know it's an endless task, it's gonna be an endless summer, but we got your back, okay? Anyway, everybody have a great Easter with you and your families, and be safe going on, thank you.